The December the 5th, hard to believe, I don't know where 2022 is going, but welcome to December the 5th, 2022, Dare County Board Commissioners meeting. At this time, I would like to ask the Reverend Cherry Wheeler to come forward for an invocation.
No.
Pardon?
Thank you first.
Nah, change that around. Is that messing y'all up?
Yes.
Okay, messing you up? Messing you up? Looks like we're gonna have some folks sing for us. And we're fortunate to have with us, I guess they gotta get back to class. I was trying to help y'all out. Yeah, the superintendent's here. So I guess we gotta do this, each year I'll reach out and I want to thank Board of Education, Chairman David Twitty for helping me out with this, but we're honored each year to have either the full choir or some participation from Manio to kind of start our meeting off. And we're fortunate to have four of our students from Manio High School Choir, School Choir, and it's directed by Hannah Henderson. So they're gonna come forward this morning and I'm gonna ask the Board of Commissioners to come up and sit up front so they can be able to enjoy not looking at your backs, but your faces. So thank y'all.
How like a winter hath my absence been like a winter from thee? How like a winter, the pleasure of the fleeting year? What breezes have I felt when dark days seemed? What old December's madness everywhere? Winter. Like a winter. Like a winter. Like a winter. How like a winter hath my absence been like a winter from thee? How like a winter. Of the fleeting year? And yet this time removed was summer's time? The teeming autumn big with rich and green? Like a winter. Winter. Like a winter. Like a winter. How like a winter. How like a winter. Has been like a winter from thee? How like a winter. How like a winter. The pleasure of the fleeting year? For summer and his pleasures wait on thee? And thou wait the fairy birds are mute? Or if they sing 'tis with so dull a cheer? Like a winter. Like a winter. Like a winter. Like a winter. How like a winter. How like a winter. Winter, the leaves look pale, dreading the winter's near. Bum bum, bum bum bum. 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 Na bum bum bum. Bum bum bum. Bum bum bum. Bum bum bum. Bum bum, 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 bum bum bum. La la la, la la la, la la. 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 Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Do 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 do. 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 Bum bum, bum bum bum. 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 And we wish a merry Christmas to you.
This morning, Park Superintendent Dave Halleck is here with us this morning. Dave, thank you for being here this morning. With that being said, now we can have an invocation by the Reverend Cherry Wheeler. Thank you, Ms. Wheeler, for being here.
Well, we're gonna do a little bit different today.
Great.
So this is gonna be an educational prayer, and hopefully the screen is going to do its thing here. So rather than just survive the holiday, I hope that we will thrive. And so here are some things that my prayer for you and the members of Dare County. Maybe. Okay, obviously, clicker number one is not working. All right, there we go. So first, keep important things first. Keep important routines. Second, relax. Third, or whichever way the buttons are going here, I'm not doing very good on buttons. Slow down. In all things, may we find balance. I'm just gonna have you click from back there because I'm not doing a very good job clicking May we always respect everyone's traditions. May we remember self-care. Remind us, it's not about the cost of the gift, really. Help us to know that no is a holy word. We can't buy it all, eat it all, drink it all, or see it all, and we need to stop trying. Give us the courage to unplug from electronics and be in the moment with friends and family.
Yes.
And may we always remember the point of the season: family, fun, and fellowship.
Thank you.
And then this last slide is hard to read and it's really busy, but here's the bottom line: If someone wishes you happy Christmas, happy Hanukkah, Merry Kwanzaa, whatever, here is how you're supposed to respond. If I say to you, "Merry Christmas," your response should be, "Thank you, you too." So we'll practice. Happy holidays!
Thank you. You too.
Happy Kwanzaa!
Thank you. You too.
Happy Hanukkah!
Thank you. You too.
All right, so we're now prayed up, and let us close with this. Dear God, grant us safety through the holidays and tolerance for traditions that differ from our own. May we not only survive but thrive this season. Guide our county leaders that they may govern with discernment and judge in all things, and justice in all things, and we pray this in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you, Reverend Wheeler. Appreciate that this morning. May we stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to our clerk.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
You don't know me, I'm Cheryl Landy, I'm the clerk to the board, and today is a special day for other reasons as well. We're swearing in our commissioners, Jim Tobin, Nicole Campdahl. We'll do that, which is why it's just timmy, and we'll take that oath. While we're trying to see where the... The mic went over there. Okay? If you'll state your name.
Jim Tobin.
And then repeat after me. Aye?
Aye. Jim Tobin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As county commissioner.
As county commissioner.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
Congratulations.
And now we'll have Rob Ross from District Two.
I'm gonna hand you the mic.
All right.
There we go.
You got it?
I'm gonna do this.
All right, you said you could do this.
There we go. And repeat after me, state your name.
Rob Ross.
Aye, Rob Ross.
Aye, Rob Ross.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As county commissioner.
As county commissioner.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And now we have Cheryl House, our Register of Deeds, and holding the Bible for him will be county manager, her husband, Steve House.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As registrar.
As registrar of deeds.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, congratulations.
Okay, now, as it's the first meeting in December, in accordance with Robert's rules, we'll have our organizational meeting where the board will appoint their chairman for the year, the upcoming year of 2023. So, and in keeping with parliamentary procedure for this particular matter, it will only take four votes to elect a chairman, and so I ask now, are there any nominations for chairman for the Board of Commissioners for Dare County?
Yes, I will nominate Bob Woodard to remain as our chair.
We have for Rob Woodard. Do I have any other nominations?
No, I second it.
And seconded by Rob, I'm sorry, by Jim Tobin. If I can have a show of hands, sirs, thank you, and it's unanimous, and congratulations, Chairman Woodard. We enjoy having you as our chairman again for the 2023 season. I'll turn the meeting over to him, and he'll take care of the votes for our vice chairman.
Thank you, thank you, Cheryl, our clerk. At this time, excuse me, I would entertain a motion for the vice chair from the board.
I'd like to nominate Wally Urban.
Okay, the motion on the floor is from Commissioner House for Wally Urban, they're seconded by Commissioner Rob Ross. Any further nominations? Hearing none, and those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously. All right, that brings us to item four, county manager.
Congratulations, Mr. Chairman. Item four is the chairman's opening remarks.
Thank you, county manager. I just have a few items this morning I'd like to address, and first off, I want to thank my fellow board commissioners for your continued confidence in myself as chair of this board. I've said this numerous times publicly, I could not be more happy to work with a board that has the willpower, the drive, and the resolve to get things done for our county and our citizens, and I appreciate that support that each of you have given me over the years, and I'll continue to try to live up to that responsibility that you have given me. So thank you all so very much. I think, I hope, everyone here today has, we just went through one of my favorite holidays, and that's Thanksgiving, and I certainly hope each and every one of you here today had an opportunity to spend time with your family and your loved ones and friends over Thanksgiving. And we're fortunate that we live in the greatest country of the world, but to have our freedoms and to be able to practice our own religion, whichever way we choose to do so, and we're blessed to have so many servicemen throughout this country, overseas, and here at home, to protect that wonderful life that we truly have here in the United States of America and here in Dare County, and we're blessed, we're truly blessed. I'd be remiss if I didn't remind everyone that Superintendent Halleck and the National Park Service will host the 119th anniversary of Orville and Wilbur Flight. It's hard to believe, but 19 years ago, we celebrated the 100th celebration of Flight. Hopefully Superintendent Halleck, the weather will cooperate this year, because the 100th celebration, it was pretty nasty.
Yes, it was. That's right, Bush was here.
One of the other things I said that I'm very, very fortunate, I live in a neighborhood in Kill Devil Hills, just beyond the trees of the airport at Wright Memorial, and the days that I have the opportunity, my wife and I walk from our house to Wright Memorial down Collington Road to the Wright Memorial and to the airport and around the monument. We go one way one day, another way the next day, we go up the third day, back down. We have the privilege of doing that, it's about a three-mile walk for us, but we're blessed to be able to do that and live so close to a historic place such as the Wright Memorial. So if you have the opportunity, nine o'clock is, I believe, is the service kickoff on the 19th, December the 17th, so I hope you can certainly make that. I'd also like to congratulate Commissioner Tobin, Commissioner Ross, and Urban will be here next month to be sworn in on their reelection to this board. Certainly, the public has spoken, and they recognize your tribute to this board and how dedicated you individuals are, and I congratulate you for that. I believe Cheryl's left, but I wanted to congratulate her. She's gotta go back to school, too, doesn't she, Steve?
No, no, well, she had to go swear at her people.
Right, but anyway, I wanted to congratulate Cheryl on her reelection to the Register of Deeds. And one special thing that I was, and some of my fellow board members were able to attend this past week, I've gotta give, once again, our vice chairman, Savings Lives Task Force, what they've done over the years is just incredible with him spearheading that. We've taken some major steps in that area, as well as Urban Bateman, who's worked diligently with the recovery court. This board has stepped up to the plate and given some $125,000 to our recovery court. We had the first, because of COVID, we couldn't do this, but just this past week, we had the first group of graduates, 21 graduates from that recovery court, is incredible. And to listen to what some of those folks have accomplished, one of them owns his own business now, doing extremely well here on the Outer Banks, it's just the individual stories that you hear from these 21 graduates are just incredible. Several of them have gone back and are now working to mentor those that are in the program there. We currently have 40 folks in that recovery court going through the program, so kudos, vice chairman, what you've done with Savings Lives Task Force, and certainly kudos to Commissioner Bateman in all of his efforts, and then certainly finally, once again, I cannot be more proud of what this board has done to step up to the plate to fund this. It's just incredible to see the results that have taken place. And now, at this time, the last thing I have to do under chairman's business this morning is I'd like to make a special presentation. It's, there's a restaurant in our area that's well-known for its incredible work and length of time that they've been in business. It's been patronized by tens of thousands of visitors and residents over the past four decades, four decades, and that's Carol Ann Angeles, the owner of Jolly Roger Restaurant on the Beach Road in Kill Devil Hills. Shortly after Carol Ann moved to the Outer Banks from Pennsylvania in 1983, she took over the ownership of the Jolly Roger, which had originally opened back in 1972, but it was closed at the time of her arrival in Dare County. Having been converted from a gas station and grocery store to a restaurant in '72, the Jolly Roger is one of the oldest restaurants on the beach. The restaurant had two owners prior to Carol Ann, who had no previous restaurant experience when she purchased the business, yet she had continued its legacy on the Outer Banks for some for some 40 years, and I quite might, might admit that she's made quite a name for herself in her business in the process. With the exception of mandatory shuts, shutdowns and bars and restaurants for two months, for a two-month period in the spring of 2020 due to COVID-19, Carol Ann has ensured that residents, visitors, and property owners always have somewhere to get a good meal and enjoy food, fellowship, and entertainment for 365 days of the year. Did you hear me? 365 days of the year. Carol Ann's restaurant is well-known for its incredible affordable 99 cent breakfast. Take advantage of it, folks. Christmas Day dinners, when the majority of other restaurants on the beach are closed for the holiday and for being the go-to spot on the Outer Banks for karaoke. In addition to being open for breakfast, lunch, and dinner every single day of the year, and being one of the best places to experience nightlife on the beach, the Jolly Roger is also very well-known for its unique eclectic, that's the best way I could say it, decor, most of which has been given to Carol Ann over the years. From families with young children to who are looking for a one-of-a-kind place to enjoy an affordable meal after a day at the beach, to seniors who want to start their day with a cup of coffee and a quality breakfast, to young adults looking to spend the night out singing and dancing with their friends while enjoying a drink or two, the Jolly Roger truly has something to offer everyone on the Outer Banks, and that is all because of Carol Ann and her hard work and dedication to sustaining her iconic business and making it a must-visit destination that provides an unforgettable experience. I just had one of those unforgettable experiences just the other morning, Carol Ann, with my wife. I'm gonna ask Carol Ann to join me up front for a presentation.
I must say, when I came here, I didn't expect this.
Carol Ann, it's another one of those I got you moments. I, I have a habit of doing this. I talk, I talked to her general manager and said, can you get Carol Ann to come to one of our board meetings, I need her to, we're trying to work on affordable housing, essential housing, and I need Carol Ann, she, she's, if anybody can help us out, she can help us out, I want her to be a part of a task force to address it. Well, that's how we got you here. This, this is a plaque that our board is making presentable to you, Carol Ann, in grateful recognition for your dedication to the Outer Banks over the fast four decades, as you have served the residents and visitors of Dare County through your iconic business, the Jolly Roger Restaurant in Kill Devil Hills. The Dare County Board of Commissioners salutes Carol Ann Angelos for her effort to provide a place where people of all ages can enjoy great food, fun, and fellowship on the Outer Banks, it's presented by our Board of Commissioners. I hope you can find in that ec, in that eclectic, uh, place of yours, a place for this plaque.
Thank you, thank you, very unexpected.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, make a comment. Carol Ann?
Yeah.
My first visit to the Jolly Roger was in, uh, the year 2000, well, actually, it was still 99, it was New Year's Eve, my family and I came to the Outer Banks quite by surprise, and we could not find any place to get a New Year's Eve dinner, except the Jolly Roger. That was my first visit 23 years ago, so well done, and thank you.
Carol Ann, very well deserving, not only for your, uh, commitment to the business aspect of the Jolly Roger, but also, I'd like to also commend you for being a good steward and a good citizen of Dare County and helping out if, anyone that's in need, and I've seen that so many times from you and your restaurant, thank you so much.
Absolutely, those, those, uh, cats, we love doing these kind of things for people like this, I mean, it's just incredible to have, uh, that caliber of an individual honored at one of our board meetings. Uh, at this time, I'll turn the, uh, agenda back over to the county manager.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, uh, that brings us down to the service pins, but before we do that, uh, in addition to the agenda, if, if you would consider moving or adding-
Yes, that's right, I forgot to do that.
An 8A, that's a, a no wait zone at the Organic Fishing Center, and Dave Halleck's here, I'll for that, and we'll do that when we get there.
Absolutely.
If it's the pleasure of the-
Have the pleasure of the board to do so.
Yes, yes.
Absolutely. All right, 8A superintendent on the agenda.
All right, with that, Mr. Chairman, we'll move to item five, and, uh, that's the service pins for December, uh, we have three today, the first is Karen Norton, Karen will be receiving her tenure pin from Felicia Norman.
Good morning, ladies, and well.
Good morning, good morning, good morning, everyone.
Good morning. Good morning.
So, um, this morning, I had the honor of recognizing Ms. Karen Norton, um, for her dedicated years of service with Dare County with the Social Services Division. Thank you, Karen, for being an essential part of our team. Karen first started out as the office assistant for the Economic Services Unit, then she was promoted to the income maintenance caseworker in a very short time, I think maybe like two months. After that, Karen began taking applications for all programs, then she shifted off into the family and children Medicaid world. That wasn't enough for her, so she then went to the Food Nutrition Services, uh, program. So Karen has been in the Food Nutrition Services Program for a little over four years. Karen is one who is committed, dedicated, and hardworking. She is the go-to worker and never says no when extra work is put on her plate. She is like the big sister of our team. Karen is the type of employee that will keep you on your toes and is never a dull moment with her, you never know what's gonna come out of her mouth or what she's gonna do. She is the entertainment of our work family, and you never know what she's up to. You have been a valuable member, Karen, of our team, and we appreciate all of your hard work, I look forward to working with you 10 more years, maybe more. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, um, could, could, we have permission to go to Jolly's and drink a Bloody Mary?
Absolutely.
Brilliant.
Well, I thought you said we had three.
We do, I'm, I'm the next one.
Well, oh. I was waiting to do your last.
Well, we can do that.
I was waiting to do, I was trying to surprise.
Nice recovery.
They're really trying to mess me up.
Next, we have Willie Brickhouse, he's receiving his 25-year pin from Sean Hughes.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. It's my pleasure to be here today to speak about Willie Brickhouse. Willie's been with us 25 years.
Wow.
First of the 23, the first 23, he was an equipment mechanic, and, uh, Willie spent a lot of that time out on roll calls, uh, keeping our equipment up and running, and quite a few of those times, it was, uh, not in favorable weather conditions. The, uh, two years ago, he moved up to our senior equipment mechanic position, now it's his time to impart his knowledge and experience onto our newer mechanics. Uh, Willie is a senior, uh, mechanic for a commercial truck, heavy-duty equipment fleet, has four mechanics under him. On top of being a mechanic, Willie holds a CDL driver's license, and he can operate any kind of equipment, you put him out of controls of. If there's one outstanding trait that Willie has, I always know, I can call on him anytime, day or night, stay late, on the weekends, or even to cross three states to bring a garbage truck home, yeah, and he's, he's there to get the job done. The only question he ever asks is, uh, what do you need me to do? And Willie, it's been a pleasure, you've been a great employee and asset to Dare County, and, um, I appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
All right, now, okay, they're really trying to mess me up this morning, I was trying to save this last one for last, but, um, this county, uh, this service pin is a 15-year service pin for our county manager. It's been my honor this morning, on behalf of this board, to certainly recognize Bobby for 15 years of service. He started with the county, uh, on a, you know, part-time basis, uh, contract basis as, uh, uh, as the county attorney, and at the same time, he was, at the same time, he was a principal in one of the leading law firms right here on the Outer Banks. Back in 2007, uh, he left the law practice so he could work full-time, uh, for the county. His role was expanded by the Board of Commissioners, at that time, he was given the additional duties as the Assistant County Manager. During this time, the board saw firsthand how Bobby was able to insightfully, uh, get things done as legal counsel and provide executive-level leadership on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. In 2009, the board also named Bobby as the county manager and had, asked him to continue the duties he had done so well as the county attorney. Fortunately for us, Bobby was willing to take both roles, which he's done in a, in extraordinary way. As county manager, Bobby is responsible for over 700 employees who serve the residents and visitors of our county. During his tenure, Bobby began a guiding hand, helping the board accomplish many, many things. For those who didn't know, the role of a county manager is to take the board's direction on just about everything under the sun, and then make it happen. Well, he's certainly done that, uh, our board, over the last, uh, 10 years that I've served on this board. To do this, a successful county manager has to be a good team builder. I'm proud of the way Bobby has pulled a great team together to do the many things it takes to properly serve the needs of the people of Dare County. He works well with our finance director, Dave Clausen, he understands the complexity of financing multimillion-dollar projects, provides leadership in preparing the county's balanced budget every year, along with Dave Clausen and his team, to bu, in order to build these many projects, and you've seen a lot of these projects just in recent years, the COA, the, the SPCA, EMS, I mean, the list goes on. Bobby has also taken the lead in helping the board create financial, um, ways to fund beach nourishment projects. He's also developed a funding formula so Dare County schools would have money that they need. Both of these endeavors have been recognized throughout the entire state of North Carolina, and he's going to multiple counties to present these, find, these ways that we're able here in Dare County to accomplish things. When disaster strikes, Bobby's right there in the trenches, guiding our emergency management team, he's right there to answer these weather guys that stand out there on the beach with a fan blowing 50 miles an hour.
The hair doesn't move.
The hair doesn't move, but he's out there, he's out there guiding them. He works effectively with leadership, all the leadership in our six different municipalities, the Park Service, Superintendent Halleck, NCDOT, and the many agencies that impact our life right here in Dare County. Over the years, Bobby has been involved in a number of statewide initiatives and organizations. He has served on the North Carolina Coastal Resources Advisory Council since 2014, and was recently reappointed for another two-year term. He's currently co-chairman, he serves as chairman for the North Carolina Beach and then the Waterways Association, and last year, he received the Presidential Recognition Award from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners for his work on the opioid settlement, and we're talking millions of dollars, folks. One of the things that I personally appreciate most about Bobby is his ability and his willingness to really listen, to really, really listen, not only to me, but our board members and the public. His, his, he's always willing to talk with residents, and I do this a lot to him, I say, Bobby, you mind calling this person or emailing this person? Guess, he's got a, a memory that's like an elephant, I, you know, a lot of times, I'll go to him and ask him the things, oh yeah, we did so-and-so-and-so-and-so, and this and that and the other, and I gotta look it up, he's got it years, years ago that he can remember and, and reel it off and tell you exactly what took place. At this time, I'd like to ask Bobby to come down front with me, and, um, I'll present him with his 15-year pin. Now, I don't know if we can get another 15 years out of him or not, but, uh, hope, hopefully so, um, and this is pretty cool, it's got a, it's got a pearl on this deal here, represents 15 years, kind of, kind of neat. Bobby, you can certainly be proud of what you've done for us and our board, and I, I think the relationship that every one of us up here have with you is second to none. You have helped me through COVID-19, folks, that you would not believe. Over 9,000 telephone calls, emails that I personally got, that I tried to answer every single one of them, and Bobby stood by my side, and he said, Bob, you, you can't do that, you gotta take a break, you, you gotta get away from that, and, and a lot of those, he, he walked me through it and helped me through it, but I think we, I think we did it in a upbeat, professional way that is second to none in the state, and, um, not only have you led us, Bobby, and done the job that we asked you to do, but you're a true friend to each and every one of these board members. God bless you, hope you got many more years around when I'm long-going.
Appreciate the, the kind words, uh, but I'll tell you the truth, when I, I look out here, I see Shanna, and I see some of our department heads sitting, they're the ones that make it go, and anything that I've been able to do is because they've done what they do, and it's much appreciated, and, and you all have allowed us, uh, to create a, a good team, and, and I think we're the best, and, and again, thank you so much.
We're going to, um, we're going to, uh, do Employee of the Month for November and December, and when, once we do that, I think we'll take a five-minute break so we can all get pictures out there so Bobby can be able to participate in that as well, since he got his 15-year pin. Is that okay with you guys?
All right, so item six on the agenda is our November Employee of the Month, we couldn't do it last month, so we're doing it this month, and Shanna Fulmer's here for that presentation.
Welcome this morning, Shanna.
How are y'all?
Good morning, Shanna, good morning.
It is my-
It is my pleasure to announce November's Employee of the Month, Mr. Ray Greggs.
Excellent.
So, for those of y'all that don't know, Ray Greggs, he works for our Facilities Maintenance Department under Public Works, and he started with the county in July of 2014. So, he just finished up his eighth year with us. He started as carpenter, and he has been since promoted to lead carpenter. But don't let that title fool you as to what his job duties entail. He has taken on the responsibility of becoming a locksmith, and he is in charge of most keying and security for county facilities. If you could see Ray's key room at the Facilities Maintenance Department, you would understand how involved and complicated that's actually been. So, we appreciate that very much. He is used heavily in the new projects, and as you know, there's been several in the past couple of years, and we trust Ray to get those keyed properly and ensure that there's security in those buildings. The Facilities Maintenance Department takes care of all county facilities, and as y'all know, there are, that list is growing every year of the number of facilities that we tend to. This allows these employees to encounter different departments and interact with many, many county employees. It was one of these employees in this other department that actually nominated Ray for this award. The words that he used to describe Ray were, always has a smile on his face, gets along with everybody, keeps everybody well informed when he's in the building, and he communicates what he's doing, and basically is a great example of what a county employee should be. And his attitude, I forgot to mention his attitude, he has a great attitude. I'd have to tend to agree with all of these attributes to describe Ray. This is actually the second time in his eight-year tenure that he has been nominated for Employee of the Month. And I think that goes to show what his resolve is for continuing to maintain a positive attitude and just being the best employee that he can be. And I appreciate everything you do for the county and for our department.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ray.
Then for our December Employee of the Month, Jody White's here to make that presentation.
Good morning, Jody.
Good morning, everyone. As you've heard, I'm here to present the Dare County Employee of the Month for December. But first on the agenda is that I, like the chairman, have to admit to a small bit of subterfuge, as I have drawn this person all the way from Hatteras under false pretenses. But I think she'll agree that this is much better than what I'd made up. So, Kelly, will you please join me up front? So, gentlemen, may I introduce to you Kelly Aiken. She is the lead school nurse for Dare County and school nurse at Cape Hatteras Elementary School. And now, if you'll just sit back and relax, because it's going to take more than the 200 words that the HR allowed me for this nomination, to regale you on all of her wonderful moments. So, Kelly graduated from East Carolina University with a Bachelor's of Science in Nursing in 2011, and while at ECU, she was swept off of her feet by a charming Hatteras Island local boy, and they were later married. Kelly worked in hospitals in both North Carolina and Florida, where she gained extensive pediatric experience and learned to like only the very best coffee. As happens with a lot of Dare County locals, roots run deep, and Kelly was drug back to Dare County by her husband several years ago, where she, and she loves it, she does. So, and this is my favorite part, I was able to hire Kelly as the Cape Hatteras Secondary Nurse in 2018, when Sid Causey retired. Since that time, Kelly has managed to establish herself as an integral part of the school health and public health teams. She transitioned from pediatric inpatient nursing to a new role in community setting with sixth to 12th graders. And as any of us with teenagers know, this is a unique time in a student's life and requires a lot of everything. So, she managed to handle everything that came her way with intelligence and striking intuition. In 2020, during early COVID, she was one of the first public health nurses to take on the very new role of contact tracer, only a year and a half into her public health career. She literally helped shape the early community interactions of the pandemic. And while she continued to help fill many public health nurse roles during the duration of the pandemic, she was instrumental in helping the Hatteras Island Schools navigate the regulations of both the CDC community guidelines and the not-always-matching school guidelines. During the 2021-2022 school year, Kelly accepted the role of the lead nurse in Dare County, our first in this, as this was a newly created position. She immediately began proving herself to be the correct choice for the role, eagerly seeking out leadership opportunities and offering to help with distribution of responsibilities. Her coworkers say that she is always available with an answer and a smile. And gentlemen, as if this was not enough, our team had a bit of a hurdle with several open positions starting this 2020 school year. So, this amazing team of nurses that I have has definitely covered multiple schools for months. Kelly has taken on the bulk of the responsibility for covering both schools in Hatteras, while we send nurses down to help rotate coverage. And just when you think that's enough, Kelly moved from the secondary school to the elementary school and had to learn a whole new age-appropriate level of care. We have recently hired a new nurse for Cape Hatteras Secondary and hope to finally allow Kelly to settle into her new role as a Cape Hatteras Elementary School Nurse. In all of this, changing career focus, navigating a pandemic, taking on a newly created position, providing coverage for a vacant position, and shifting to a new age group, Kelly has never once complained, not once. She's phenomenal. A gifted nurse, an intelligent leader, a competent employee, and a dedicated teammate. She's phenomenal and very deserving of the Employee of the Month Award.
Absolutely.
Wow, congratulations.
And with that, those of you that receive an award, if you'll go right out through here so we can get a picture, and we'll take a break.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to call the Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting back to order and turn it over to our county manager.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, that leads us to item eight on the agenda, that's public comment. First today, for those of you that are here for public comment, now's the time that we allow that. If you've signed up in just a minute, I'll recognize you. If you have not signed up, if you raise your hand, I'll recognize you then. When you come forward for public comment, please state your name and where you're from. Please limit your comments to five minutes. There's a green light up on the podium that'll come on when your time begins. There's a yellow light that will come on when you have about a minute left, and there's a red light that will come on when you need to conclude your remarks. First on my list is, we've got Michael Tillot here with the Garage Band Charity Team for a presentation.
Michael, good morning and good to see you.
Good morning, good to see you all. I hope everybody's doing well.
Yeah, good to hear.
First of all, my name is Michael Tillot with Garage Band Charity Group. I'm a partner, Ms. Sarah Ho, and we're representing the Garage Band Charity Group. Richard, our other partner, had other obligations today. He could not make it, so we're going to take this on ourself. And first of all, I'd just like to thank you all, I'd like to thank the whole county for everything you all do for this organization and this group. And before I present these, just wanted to let everyone know with all the help of everyone in the county, we have been able to raise in the last four years, right at $85,000, to give back to the community with this event. We could not do this without everyone in the county working together because as everyone knows, this county is just a big family, and everybody gets treated like a family. That's why, I guess in order to remark to you here, it's family funding fellowship.
Yeah.
And that's what this place is all about, and it's one for everyone. This wouldn't happen. It was a dream of mine, and all of you all in this county made it come true. And I just want to thank you for that. And so I won't take up a whole lot of time. We want to first present a donation check to the Children and Youth Partnership for Dare County. Could you introduce yourself?
Yes, my name is Kaylee Askew. I work for the Children and Youth Partnership for Dare County, so I'm here to accept that and say thank you to Michael, Sarah, and y'all's team. It truly is an overwhelming feeling of gratitude that we feel as a whole, our team, for all that they do to, for this event and throughout the year, and their continued support for us. It's amazing to see us turn around and put it into our programs and give back and do the work for our children, our community, and the family. So it really, it really, something like this really does help us out, so we really appreciate it.
Awesome.
Thank you.
On behalf of the Garage Band Charity Group, we would like to give you this check for $10,000.
Oh, thank you.
Wow.
Thank you guys so much.
Got another check to present to the Dare County Motorsports Charity Group. Ms. Terry, on behalf of the Garage Band Charity Group, I'd like to present you with this check. $2,500.
Thank you so much. Yeah, we're going to take it as Sam. Thank you very much.
And we've always also donated to the Food For Thought, the Gift Angel Without A Hatteras, Roanoke Island Food Pantry, and the Hyde County Christmas Cheer, and the Elizabeth City State Virginia Tillot Endowment Grant.
Wow.
And just want to thank everybody for y'all's help because without you all, none of this happens. Sarah, if you'd like to say anything, you're more than welcome to.
You've covered it all.
All right, thank you all very much for your time.
Congratulations.
We're looking forward to our fifth, our fifth year 2023, May 5th and 6th. Come on out, family funding fellowship, have a great time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
You bet.
Next is Virginia Payne. Ms. Payne, welcome.
Well, good morning. Thank you for having me. My name is Virginia Payne, and I'm from Watertown, Ohio. I've drove 10 hours to be here at your meeting, and I feel very honored to have the privilege to address you. I'd also like to thank you for your service in Dare County, for your knowledge and leadership that we entrust in you. Today I came to speak about the beaches in Rodanthee. It is such a sad condition that our beaches are left to be in. And I just wanted to see if there's anything that the community or you guys as a whole can do. I'm here essentially to beg you to put together your leadership and your knowledge of our community, help save our town. I'm absolutely scared of a hurricane coming through our town. I don't believe it'll be left on the map. I have had a home in Rodanthee for 13 years now, and I have seen what beach merch, beach nourishment has done, not only for the homeowners, but the tourists now that come. They don't like our beach anymore. They're canceling their vacations. They don't bring their families to Rodanthee anymore. It used to be the beach would be lined with families enjoying playing in the sun. You know, they're not there anymore. I walked yesterday the beach. There's 10 homes in the ocean that, you know, it's coming closer and closer. And we have seen through beach nourishment, I have seen through beach nourishment, I have seen the waves break farther out, no damage for years thanks to NCDOT when they nourished the beach, the northern part of Rodanthee. Rodanthee wasn't nourished, but northern part was nourished. I've seen endangered species of a ridley turtle come up on the beaches of Rodanthee. I've seen seagulls come. I've seen, you know, endangered birds be there. I've seen seals come rest on our beaches. Yesterday, I walked the beach. I couldn't walk it. There's no beach left, and I'm begging you, and I'm pleading, please save our beaches. Find a way to get us some beach nourishment before it's too late. We can't all move the houses. Those turtles, the people, the homeowners, everybody needs to enjoy our beaches. It's not safe to have homes collapse in the beach. It's not safe to have no beach for, you know, those species that need it. It's all our homes. And that's all I wanted to say was, you know, I would really appreciate it if you could go back with your knowledge. I'm sure you'll find a way to do it, to find the funding and the ability to help save our town. That's all I have to say, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Ms. Payne.
You're welcome.
Next I have Daniel Kerlockian.
Morning. I said put a name and a face together.
Good morning, yes.
Welcome this morning.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman, and I have some, some words here. Apologies, and I'd like to say before I start, I've spoken to, I respect Dave Hallick and the Park Service, and I've spoken to them about these issues in the past. And I've talked to you about these issues, and I'd like to talk at this forum about these issues and about, to follow on what this lovely lady has talked about in Rodanthee. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. As you know, I'm a homeowner in Rodanthee and here to echo what you've already heard from people like Jet Farabee, Tricia Midget, John Head, Matt King, and so many others regarding the deteriorating situation in Rodanthee. I'm grateful for the partnership with Dare County and especially the support from the commissioners and county manager Bobby Outen, and his willingness to listen to what we're dealing with and to offer help. I also want to thank the county environmental health department for their help through this process. It's unfortunate that they and so many other county employees have been treated so poorly by the Park Service, an entity that I truly admired before this experience. I love the national parks, but as you know, the Park Service has, no other way to say, harassed me and countless other property owners in Rodanthee simply because they believe that our homes are on park property. You've likely seen the videos of them tampering with and going inside my septic tank, interrogating my renters, and driving over my septic field. You've confirmed to me that NP, the NPS threats on county officials for just issuing septic permits and doing their jobs. New Park Service permit requirements stopped my piling work from being completed prior to the devastating nor'easter last May, and NPS even claimed that the vibrations from my piling work would harm sea turtle eggs nearby, further delaying that work. This is coming from the Park Service that claims they'll do anything to keep these homes from falling into the ocean. I get it, the Park Service doesn't want our homes on the beach, and nobody wants their homes, these homes in this situation. But they act as if we all have hundreds of thousands of dollars at our disposal to buy a lot and move our homes. They act as if homes on the beach are new to Rodanthee. This has been the case for decades across North Carolina, yet they claim they only realized it once these homes fell this year. Many people say the realtors should have known better than to sell these homes. I think that criticism is entirely misplaced. We all received the disclosures about Kama and erosion. What we weren't told and what no one could have known was that the Park Service would mount a tremendous effort to prevent us from using our homes under the basis that these homes are on park property, further deteriorating them due to neglect. Case in point, from Rodanthee down to Buxton, from May to July of last year, septic permits that were approved under the law required sign-off from NPS, and no repairs were permitted on the beach during that time, preventing any of those homes from being operational before August and missing out on the majority of the rental season. When the state of North Carolina gave the Park Service this land, the deed is clear that, that they were given a hard-line boundary of 500 feet inland from the high water line in front of Rodanthee and the villages. The Park Service has done nothing for over 60 years and watched that line erode way past the original 500 feet, doing nothing to maintain the shoreline, and now contends that they have a moving or ambulatory boundary inclusive of the wet sand beach. Why are we not pushing back on this? Under this logic, all of the villages will eventually be national park land unless something is done to stop the erosion or to push back on NPS. Furthermore, under this theory, the Park Service has zero incentive to maintain the beach. If they can just move inland and claim private property, then why would they care to maintain the shoreline, especially if they can make it next to impossible for us to protect the homes? The county entering into the buyout plan agreement will only serve to further embolden the Park Service and in fact, pinpoints the precise homes for them to target to continue their harassment. What happens if a homeowner doesn't want to get bought out? Will rules be changed to force us out or prevent us from operating? We've already seen this from NC DEQ with their new proposed septic rules, which were introduced alongside Mr. Hallick. How will the program fairly appraise our homes with the policies making it so much harder to be operational? Dave has already told me that because he believes my home is on park land, any buyout offer would be diminished. A buyout program seems so much more costly than beach nourishment, and I feel strongly the county is making a choice between the two. I counted 100 properties in Rodanthees identified within that, that program. With an average price of 400K, which would be extremely low for those homes, the program would spend $40 million. This could provide, based on the duck and Avon nourishment prices, four beach nourishment projects. This doesn't even include the cost of tearing down the homes or the impact it will have for years to come on adjoining property owners. If there's no will to do nourishment now, it will never happen with a buyout program. I realize I have to, I have to wrap up. I hope that you consider strongly beach nourishment and, and sort of the impact that that's had across North Carolina, and what that could do to Rodanthee, and, and really the cost savings that that would have compared to this program. And I do appreciate all the work that you've all done.
Thank you. That's all that I have signed up. Would anyone else like to speak? Yes, ma'am. Sure, come up and state your name and where you're from.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Cheryl Hart. I'm from Chesapeake, Virginia, and we do own a home in Rodanthee on the oceanfront, and we're here to support that Rodanthee needs help. We're blessed right now that our home is on a, built on a dune, that I believe our dune, not 100% positive, is actually higher than NC 12. When our dune is gone, that water's going to rush right through to all the homes heading to NC 12 and goes straight to the sound. We self-manage our home for the last couple of years, and I've seen on social media all of the guests that are concerned and disturbed with our beaches. They're not coming anymore. I've had guests ask me before they book, you know, is your home in the water like so many other homes? Our small little town is getting terrible, terrible national news. You know, friends from all over the country have called you, how's your house? We've seen three houses go into the ocean this year. That's not the kind of publicity that we need for Hatteras Island because I know that a lot of income is generated from Hatteras Island, and I just, we're just here asking for any help and guidance that any of you guys can help us with. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Other public comment this morning? Anyone else here for public comment? Any public comment in Buxton?
No comment from Buxton.
That, Mr. Chairman, we would close the public comment, and that takes us to item 8A that we added to the agenda. Dave Hallick is here to ask, answer questions if you have questions about this, but they have, there is a no-wake zone that, that has been implemented by the Park Service at the Organizational Efficiency Center. They're af, they're asking us to approve a no-wake zone so that the state of North Carolina can acknowledge that and allow their wildlife officials to enforce the no-wake zone. If we don't ask for it, then NC Wildlife can't enforce it, only the federal authorities can enforce it. So they've asked us-
I was trying to figure that out, Bobby. How do we get convoluted, I recommend, I'm looking at Dave. Now, I understand.
Dave tells me they've had public hearings and no one showed to oppose it. They've been to the Organizational Efficiency Center, and they're, they had no opposition. And so as far as we know, there's no one, I think Mr. King at the Organizational Efficiency Center is in favor of it as well. So with that, we're asking that you move forward and approve that so that Dave can get the state designation and have some help enforcing that no-wake zone.
Motion to approve.
Is that, is this the resolution that you've proposed and that we-
Yes, sir.
-agree? Okay. Then there's motion on the floor by Commissioner Ross to approve the resolution as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Tobin seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none then? Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sent? Motion carries unanimous. Superintendent, is that what you need?
Pretty easy, Dave.
Chairman, that brings us to item nine on the agenda. This is a public hearing with regard to the NCDOT 5310 and 5311 capital grants for our transportation program. We do these each year annually. Funds are used, the 5310 funds are used for our seniors, and the 5311 funds are used for administrative purposes. The combined grants will cover expenses for a wheelchair-equipped van, replace, and for other annual services for all 10 of our vans. In order for us to proceed, we have to have a public hearing. Once we've approved that, or gone through that public hearing, there's a resolution there that you have to adopt that allows us to go forward with that. Radcliffe's here, he's our transportation director. If you have questions for him, or if you need to add anything to what I've just said, then we can do that now before we do the public hearing.
Okay, any questions? Okay. Any questions?
Anything else?
I'm just grateful to be here. I do want to say things, I do want to say that I'm not going to sing up here. So that's a relief to everyone. But I do want to just say that, you know, our department is a small group, and we really do a lot of work to help the community. And one of the things that has helped us has been the part-time pay increase from $12 to $15. I just want to thank everyone that was involved with that. And so that has made a big difference. We're still in need of some part-time drivers down south, but we're doing, doing good, and thanks to everyone that helps with the department.
With that said, we would open a public hearing with regard to the fiscal year 2024 NC DOT 5310 and 5311 combined capital program grant applications. The rules for the public hearing are the same as I just described for public comment. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak to that issue this morning? Seeing no hands here, is there anyone in Buxton who'd like to speak to that issue?
No comment from Buxton.
With that, Mr. Chairman, we would close the public hearing and ask that you all consider and approve the resolution.
Motion to approve the resolution.
All right. There's a motion on the floor by the Vice Chairman to approve the resolution as presented, and it's been seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, then. Those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you.
Item 10, we have Brown Thornton and Stephanie Baker here. They're here to make a presentation on the Human Trafficking Awareness Month.
Good morning, ladies, and thank you for being so patient.
Thank you for allowing us to be here. I'm Bronwyn Thornton. I'm the Executive Director of the Outer Banks Hotline, and this is Stephanie Baker. She's the Associate Director. In the United States today, the number of people, including children and infants, that are bought and sold on a daily basis is second only to the number of illegal drugs. Let that sink in for a second. Second only to the number of illegal drugs. It's in our cities, it's in our counties, it's in our suburbs, it's in our farming communities, and yes, it is here in Dare County. And with that being said, Outer Banks Hotline respectfully asks the Commissioners to consider adopting the following proclamation.
Before I read the proclamation, I've put a little presentation together. I want to thank you, Chairman and Board of Commissioners, for allowing us to be here today and request that you resolve and proclaim January as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Dare County. In 2011, on January 11th, President Barack Obama issued a presidential proclamation designating each January to be National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. The anniversary of this proclamation became known as Human Trafficking Awareness Day. As defined by Department of Homeland Security, human trafficking involves the use of force, fraud, or coercion to obtain some sort of type of labor or commercial sex act. Human trafficking affects men and women, boys and girls, all ages, regardless of race, sexual preference, or nationality. Some trafficking victims are born into it and are unable to ever escape it. They spend their entire lifetime being trafficked. The Victims of Trafficking and Violence Protection Act of 2000 is a federal statute. It was the first comprehensive law to address and combat human trafficking in terms of providing protection to victims and prosecution of traffickers. The statute defines the different types of trafficking. Commercial sex, any sex act where anything of value, such as money, drugs, shelter, food, clothing, et cetera, is given or received by any person. Slavery, the exploitation where people are legally considered personal property. Involuntary servitude, scheme, plan, pattern, causing a person to believe that if they do not enter or continue a labor obligation or situation, they'll suffer serious harm, abuse, or other negative consequences. Pionage, involuntary servitude based upon a real or alleged indebtedness. Debt bondage, similar to pionage, debt bondage involves a debt that seemingly can never be paid off, forcing the victim into exploitative labor indefinitely. Traffickers and buyers are the backbone of human trafficking. Traffickers use psychological means to recruit by taking advantage of their victims' instability, oftentimes caused by domestic conflict, immigration status, or economic distress. Traffickers prey on the weak. Buyers also play a large role in human trafficking as it all goes down to the principle of economics, supply and demand, an integral component of the human trafficking equation. Public awareness and education are critical to ending and preventing human trafficking. North Carolina is currently ranked number nine in the United States for human trafficking, and consistently ranks in the nation's top 10. Dare County is not immune to this form of modern-day slavery. We've had 15 cases of human trafficking in the last three years. That's 15 that we've seen. However, the human trafficking problem is larger than these numbers as the majority are never reported, the majority of cases. Several factors contribute to the trafficking problem in North Carolina, specifically in Dare County, including, but not limited to, large agricultural hunting and fishing industries, a large hospitality and tourism industry, and the location just below the Virginia border. For the past two years, Hotline and the Dare County Sheriff's Office have been collaborating to find ways in which we can better provide outreach, awareness, and response to human trafficking, not only in Dare County, but in our region. And in doing so, we recognized a major need to plan, develop, and implement a multidisciplinary human trafficking task force. This year, we applied for and received jointly a grant through the U.S. Office of Victims of Crimes for exactly this purpose. We are working closely with Sheriff Doug Doughty, Investigator Jackie Kine, and Victims Advocate Gail Hutchinson on the task force and in our general work with and for survivors. Only 15 grants were awarded in the entire United States. The submission from Dare County and the Outer Banks Hotline was one of 15 recipients. And we've received a combined total of $860,000, excuse me, $860,818 to be distributed over a three-year period. Broken down, Dare County was awarded $416,354, and Outer Banks Hotline $444,464. Additionally, each agency is required to contribute 25% in matching funds, bringing the total amount of funding to combat human trafficking in our county and surrounding area, $1,076,25 to combat the problem. The task force is going to stretch beyond Dare County to include efforts across Camden, Kurutuck, and Pasquattank. Together, we will operate as the North Carolina Eastern Region Human Trafficking Task Force. Outer Banks Hotline is calling upon Dare County agencies and workers, private businesses, faith-based, and other organizations, schools, and private citizens to recognize the role we all play in ending human trafficking or modern-day slavery. And we're calling to observe the month of January as Human Trafficking Awareness Month. In doing so, we call for appropriate messaging, programming, and activities throughout the month of January aimed at ending and preventing all forms of human trafficking. For these reasons, we hope it is your judgment to pass the following resolution to proclaim January as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Dare County. Whereas human trafficking involves the use of force, fraud, or coercion to obtain some sort, excuse me, some type of labor or commercial sex act. And whereas human trafficking affects women, men, boys, and girls of all ages, regardless of race, sexual preference, or nationality. And whereas traffickers prey on vulnerable populations. And whereas supply and demand are an integral component of the human trafficking equation. And whereas North Carolina is currently ranked ninth in the United States for human trafficking, consistently ranks in the nation's top 10 states, and Dare County is not immune to this form of modern slavery. And whereas Outer Banks Hotline and the Dare County Sheriff's Department are joint recipients of a Department of Justice Office for Justice Programs Office of Victims of Crime Grant with a combined worth of just upwards of $860,000 to combat human trafficking in our region. And whereas with this grant money, we can create and implement a North Carolina Eastern Region Joint Human Trafficking Task Force to fight the growing human trafficking crisis in Dare, Kurutuck, Camden, and Pasquattank Counties. Now, therefore, Dare County does hereby proclaim January 2023 to be recognized as Human Trafficking Awareness Month, the fifth day of December 2022. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you, ladies, and I will entertain a motion for this resolution.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House. It's been seconded by the Vice Chairman. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir, Commissioner Ross.
You want to go, Danny?
Thank you. Down in Hatteras, 94% of our economy is hospitality-based cleaners. And I don't want to be overly dramatic, but when you have people who are desperate to get to the United States, they are fair, they're not fair game. They are ripe for abuse. And it's a sad thing to see, but I'm aware of some instances and exactly what the professionals are saying about that a lot of it goes unreported. Some people will, it's very sad. So, and thank you for the word, but it's very real in Dare County. That's, this is not an overly dramatic statement. It is real because we have, we depend on a lot of J1s, H2B folks, and they'll do anything to be in the United States. So it's a real thing. I just want people to be aware of it, that if you're in the hospitality industry, you suspect it and do see it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ross?
Yeah, I had a couple of things, Danny, along that theme. Number one, I was initially reacting favorably. I was encouraged, thinking, wow, 15 grants in the U.S., and we received one. And then I thought, geez, we needed to get a grant for this. I mean, it's kind of like good news and bad news. The second thing I had, when I read this the other day, I think I even emailed County Manager and our Chair. Guys, I got to confess, I'm familiar that, yes, sexual assault and domestic assault can be absolutely devastating. I had no idea, Danny, that trafficking was even a thing in Dare County, let alone our region. And when I read the words, "The task force would be put together to fight a trafficking crisis", I thought, I've got to ask these ladies, what? How is that possible? I mean, in this day and age, I'm stunned. I mean, I believe everything you say. I just am having trouble grasping that this could actually be real. The assaults, again, I understand, but what, how does that work? How can that, I don't understand.
There's bad people out there. We all know. They'll take advantage of, a lot of these are kids, you know?
They're younger kids.
Of course, they're kids. Yes.
And Commissioner Ross, you're not unique into what you're saying. It's much easier for everyone to live inside your bubble. And in my bubble, human trafficking doesn't happen. But the reality of it is, yes, it does. And of the 15 grants that were awarded in the United States, there were only three on the East Coast. And we were the only rural county to be awarded one of the federal grants.
I hate to even say this, but does that indicate that we have a severe problem and need the grant here in our rural communities, those four counties?
The fact that North Carolina is number nine in the country indicates that there's a real problem. Yes, sir.
Oh, jeez. Guys, thank you for what you do. I didn't know. I just didn't.
And that's part of what we want to do, is it's public education.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, thank you again, ladies. We have a motion on the floor. Commissioner Vice Chairman Overman has a comment.
Ms. Baker, you mentioned during, initially in your comments that, and I'm asking you just because hunting and fishing is an integral part of our economy in Dare County. But I think you mentioned specifically that hunting and fishing was playing a role in this. Can you go into that a little deeper? Explain that.
Thank you for asking that, Commissioner Overman. A lot of it is in the cleaning houses and the processing plants that go along with hunting and fishing. That's where you'll find a lot of trafficking.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. Just want a little clarification there. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. With that being said, there's a motion on the floor to approve the resolution. Those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you again, ladies.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks for what you're doing.
Chairman, that brings us to item 11 on the agenda. This is the NC Office of Recovery and Resilience Strategic Buyout Program. And you've heard a little bit of public comment about that, and I think you've gotten a bunch of emails. We've referred to this in our discussions when I've talked to some of you individually as INCOR, and that's what this entity is. I'm going to use this opportunity, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, to sort of answer some background before we get down to doing it.
Yes, sir.
First of all, this fund is a fund that was funded by the federal government, and it was funds that were given to North Carolina Emergency Management, and they created INCOR to disperse the funds. These funds were given to the state for the purpose of buying out distressed homes throughout the state, not just to Dare County. This is not Dare County money. We don't have $184 million or whatever the number was, as somebody had said, sitting in a grant fund, that we have the ability to make a choice on how it's spent. These are funds that we would have to apply for, and we don't even apply for them. We would have to be the pass-through entity so that the funds would come from the state to us and then go out to a homeowner who might want to take advantage of the fund. It's completely voluntary. No one has to do it. And so, again, your decision today is simply, do we act as the pass-through, enter the contracts to do that? If we were to do that, what would happen is, INCOR would then go out and appraise the houses they would, who want to participate. They would make an offer at the fair market value, whatever that is, and the owner could either accept it or reject it. And if they chose to reject it, then they choose to reject it. If they choose to accept it, then INCOR pays them the money, and the deed is actually titled, if we do it, to Dare County. And there's a conservation easement put on it so that the property couldn't be developed into the future because it's a distressed property. If the owner chooses not to do it, then the status quo remains. And so really, what this is, is not the solution to beach nourishment. It's not the idea that we would buy out all the houses so you don't have to do beach nourishment. It's an opportunity for people that are currently in distress to maybe get something out of their property before it falls into the ocean as time passes on. And so that's what it's about. Again, we, Mr. Kalakin said we were throwing the money away or we should use it for beach nourishment. We don't have the option to do that. Again, it's not our money. It's a federal program that's run through the state of emergency management. We can make the dollars available to the public or not make them available, but we can't decide how they're spent. They're either, you make the application and move on, or you don't. And so that's what this program is about. It's not the solution to the problem in Rodanthe, but it is an opportunity for someone who wanted to take a part in it in Rodanthe to-
Or Buxton.
Or Buxton, that's right, or Buxton, to have an opportunity to get some compensation for their home that's distressed and maybe isn't even able to be rented at the current time, that kind of thing. So, you know, it may not be something they can accept. It may not be enough money to pay someone. And if it doesn't, they'll choose not to do it, and then the status quo remains until a solution is found. With respect to beach nourishment there, we've been working on this, but we've been looking at beach nourishment there since we did the Buxton Project five or six years ago. We did a study then of Rodanthe. The issue we have in Rodanthe is funding, and there isn't funds in our beach nourishment fund sufficient to cover that yet. In many of the other towns, everybody says, why did you do it somewhere else and you didn't do it here? If you use NACSED, NACSED have the tax base sufficient to pay 50% of the cost of their project. The Rodanthe tax base can't support 50% of that project, even if we had the other 50% available. So we've got some funding challenges there if we're going to choose- So we've got some funding challenges there if we're going to choose to do nourishment there. And then longer term, we might as well get it on the table. You are going to have some prioritization issues because we've got issues at the canal zone as you come off the Bass Night Bridge. We've got issues down at Old Isabel Inlet in the Hatters Village, where you can stand on the yellow line and throw a rock in the ocean or the sand. And so, you know, if we lose the road south of the Bass Night Bridge, then it doesn't matter because we can't get to Rodanthie, and we can't get to anything else on Hatters Island. And so as the fund grows, and we're going to make at some point some decisions on how to spend the money that's in that fund, the prioritization issue is going to come before you, and you're going to have to decide what those priorities are. It would be our hope that we could use our funding for the populated areas, and that DOT or someone could use their funding to protect Highway 12 in those areas where there is no, there is no population. That has not been the case up to now. DOT has done the one project in Rodanthie to hold that road until they got the Jug Handle Bridge constructed. But they were unwilling to do the same thing in Buxton, where we had a problem much the same as we have in Rodanthie, and they were unwilling to do it in Avon, as we had problems there, and that road was imperiled as well. And so there's some decisions that have to be made. The fund's going to have to grow some more. I can't tell you how long that's going to take because I don't know what the growth rate in the fund is going to be. I mean, if we had three more years like the last three, then, you know, things would be very good in the fund. I don't expect that to continue. We run the model every so often, we'll continue to run it. We've also asked our consultants, Tim Cannon and his team, to begin looking at that project again, to give us some more current numbers and also to talk to us about
Who is this gentleman again, Bobby?
Cannon.
Dr. Cannon, yeah.
I'm just, I'm sharing. Not everybody may have known who this gentleman was.
And to give us some real numbers about volumes, because we got a couple of things different there now. The erosion rate is high there, so it doesn't compare erosion rate-wise to our other projects. So we don't have a one-to-one dollar-for-dollar analysis. And two, so we don't really know what volumes we need. Do we need, we've got a roughly two-mile stretch of beach that's in peril, but how far north and south of that do you have to go to maintain that beach at a width that you choose, what volumes of sand? And so we're trying to get that information so that we can scale the project, get some numbers for it, compare the numbers that it's going to cost to do it versus the numbers that we have in the fund to do it, and then know what our shortfall is so that if we're asking for funds and that becomes the priority, then we know what we're asking for as we go to whatever funding source we can find to do it. So those things are all happening.
Is there a lead time on permitting that would be necessary for a project of this size, Bobby?
Roughly two years. If we had the money in the pot today, it would take us roughly two years to get a permit. You know, you might could speed that up. The fastest one we've ever done is 18 months. NACSED took, what was it, Dave, seven years?
Yeah, close to six.
So we think around two years is about what it takes to get a permit to do a project. And so that's where we are. Again, we can't begin applying for permits until we know we have a way to fund it and we're not at that place yet. So with this thing, all we're asking you to do today is to give us guidance, are we willing to be that pass-through to make available those INCOR funds for any property owner that wanted to take advantage of that in the strategic buyout program? And Barton is here. Did I hit all the buttons, Barton? Anything else I missed in that?
I think you covered it. Yeah, next month I'll have to carry an application for trying to determine how much we can
And just as a caveat, this didn't just come up. This is the result of several months of work by Barton on this program. He and I had a meeting last week. There's still some hiccups in the process. There's still some eligibility things we haven't quite sorted out with them yet. So this isn't a given as we speak that it's done, but what I didn't want to do is get too deep into it until I brought you all up to speed and make sure that you're on board with us moving forward.
Was this just us on our own? Was this in collaboration or contact with the National Park Service?
So, the process began, we've had, there's been a number of meetings over the last three or four months that we've attended with, not just with the park service, but with NCDEQ, with FEMA, with all the regulatory, state and federal stakeholders, trying to come up with solutions to not just Rodanthie, but to this problem on the beaches. And those discussions are ongoing. At one of those meetings, the representative of INCOR was there. I talked to her to find out how that could apply to Rodanthie specifically. Come to find out, Barton doing his job, he had already talked to her. So she was already familiar with what I was asking about, and they were already involved in those discussions. And so with that said, the park service got interested from the same meeting, in the same pot of funds, for the same purpose, and we were going on kind of simultaneous tracks. The park service process, by virtue of being in the federal government, is much more complicated. There are a lot more layers of decision-makers that have to weigh before they can make any decisions. They've got federal issues with what do you do with the land when it's over? They can't just put it in the park, as I think Mr. Klocken was concerned they were going to put it in the park. Well, they can't just do that. They can't just take a deed. They got stuff where if they take a deed, they can't take it with restrictions. Well, it's got to be restricted to get the money. So they've got a bunch of things doing it. And so since we were talking too, we said, well, why don't we just keep the process moving, or we're going to be, two years from now, still talking about it? We'll go to our board. We either in or we're out. If we're in, then we can make the fund available. If someone wants to take advantage of it, they can, but we're not waiting to sort through all that. I talked to the park service and told them that was the direction that Barton and I thought we should proceed in. They were okay with that. They're fine with that too, so there's no conflict between us and the park service. And we've been having those discussions in earnest with the INCOR folks since then. Again, there's still some details in the grant process about eligibility for second homes and investment properties and things like that that they don't have answers to yet. And so rather than, if they call me next week and say, I've got the answer, and we can go forward, I don't want to wait till January to come back to you all to give permission. So I'm trying to get our ducks in a row so that when they're ready, then we can act. And that's why we're here today.
Sorry, go ahead, Jim.
I've got a question. It says it will cover up to approximately $470,000 or fair market value, which is, whichever is lesser. But then it goes on to say, it will cover all the costs associated with the purchase of the property, such as appraisal, legal fee costs, survey, title reports, and will cover the costs related to demolition. Does that come out of the $470,000?
No, they take the $470,000, they pay for the house. They then pay for all the costs and expenses of closing.
So it won't be any cost to the county?
And then once it's closed, they then pay the cost to get the house off of the beach. So it doesn't cost us, we're simply the pass-through, the mechanism to make it all work. They got to have a governmental entity.
Would the, quote, demolition be able to be moving the house to a different location?
I don't know.
No, no. But it wouldn't be including the $470,000. It's $470,000 for the purchase price plus whatever demolition and closing cost costs.
It is a maximum of $470,000.
It's a demolition program. It's not a moving the house program.
That's an important point, that this is building an airplane while we're trying to fly it. Not all this stuff has been, not all the boxes are checked. It's an effort.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
There's some maps attached to the, I was hoping we might
So those are relatively arbitrary. Those are the work of preliminary. They're the work of Barton, Noah, and I, trying to say, if these funds were available, what houses are at risk, if you will? Who do we think might be willing to take advantage of this? Where do we think we have people that this might benefit? And so we drew those lines, trying to be consistent with light properties, light distances from the ocean, all that kind of stuff.
Stable line of vegetation.
To try to create a box where we could show INCOR, this is what we, this is, these are the folks that could take advantage of the property, of the program, if they chose to. They're preliminary, they're not etched in stone. We can change them whenever we want. We can add to it, take away from it, but we got to give them something.
The third map has things highlight, I was just wondering the distinction between the three. I was trying to make sure I followed the ones. First two had the red line, then the last one has kind of shading on top of, I guess, targeted structures. And are those three contiguous sections of Rodanthie?
The first two are Rodanthie North, Rodanthie South, and then the one with kind of the highlighted is Buxton.
It's Buxton.
If I'd looked at the fine print, I would have seen that.
Killed by the ball field.
Yeah, I saw the ball field. Yes, thank you. Okay, yeah, that's helpful. Thanks, Barton.
And like you said, we were looking at, you know, historical impacts, ocean, overwatch. We're looking at first line of vegetation and kind of looking at that. But any properties in this area can, on a case-by-case basis, ask to join. So if a neighbor who is not in this original map would like to sell, they can actually call us up or call the state up and join in if they are interested. This isn't like locked in place. It can happen for the next 10 years, the map could change.
Well, this is just strictly another option, short-term, for the property owner. It's that simple. It's that simple. And we need to move on that to be able to give them that opportunity.
Bobby, you get some key points, I think, in going through this, that I just want to rehash this because I think they're the, where the rubber meets the road, you might say. One is, is the time to get the money together, and at best guess, that's a three- to five-year operation. Then the time to do a beach nourishment study and implement that is probably, realistically, in the four- to five-year range. So, well, I'm talking about by the time you get the money, by the time you get the study, you're looking at that. So back to the word Bob used a while ago, this would appear to be a reasonable option for someone who would want to take advantage of it.
Your point is correct in that this is a reasonable option for somebody that wants to take advantage of it, and that there's going to be a lag time between when we could do a project and now, and that's going to be multiple years. Now, I don't know I can tell you that it's going to be five years. I think if the money got right, everything got right, I think we could permit it and do some stuff faster than five years. But right now, we can't, this decision isn't a decision on whether, unlike the emails you've seen, we're not deciding whether or not to do beach nourishment. This doesn't have any bearing on whether we do beach nourishment or not. This just makes this opportunity available to whoever chooses to take advantage of it. For the houses that can't get permitted, that can't get a septic tank put in, that are sitting there empty and they have no options, this is an option for them to get some money. It's nice for the people that want to use the beach because it will allow that house to be removed from the beach, rather than fall on the beach and damage the beach and destroy the beach and destroy the habitat, as Ms. Payne said later. It would get that house out of the way. And so for those kind of things, it serves a twofold purpose. But the major thrust of this is to give those homeowners an opportunity should they choose to take it.
All right, any other comments with respects to enter into this agreement?
I just got one question. And Bobby, with this funding and stuff, is there a point to where it cuts off? In other words, I've got a house that's on the beach, I want to go into this project, or possibly thinking about doing into this, and the next storm comes and half the pilings are wiped out and the house is leaning over and ready to fall. At that point in time, it's beyond this? Or when is that delineated?
Speaks to one of the issues that Mr. Klocken brought up, and that would become the appraised value. What becomes the value of a wrecked house that's uninhabitable? It's not going to be $474,000, and so
No, I understand, Bobby. What I'm trying to get
But yes, it would be eligible.
It would still be eligible until it actually just falls in. Okay.
All right, do I have a motion to, for the county manager to enter into an agreement with the NCOR? Salute. But motion on the floor by Commissioner Tobin, seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Couple of comments after the motion I'll make. Those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. In fairness to those residents and the number of emails that we are getting, it's obvious to me that, and I don't mean this disrespectfully, that they think we can snap our fingers and come up with the money and do a beach nourishment project, and that's not the case. In fairness to them, I am willing for us to hold a town hall with those folks so that we can educate them on the process of what it has taken us in the last 10 years to do some 200-plus million dollars in nourishment projects with our municipalities and the county. But there's got to be skin in the game from the residents, and that is being done on an annual basis in all of our municipalities and in the projects that we've done to date. We cannot, nor will myself, I won't speak for the board, fail to jeopardize a fund that we've spent over 200 and some odd million dollars on nourishing northern beaches in Buxton and Avon to not have the funds available to do maintenance projects. We've all sat at this board and said that we need to protect that. In fairness to those residents in Rodanthie, they need to know the challenges that we face in order to fund these projects. We just can't snap our fingers and do this. We got to make sure that the model works. We got to make sure that the money's available in the model if we want to attempt to even do that. Along with that, as most of you are aware, I established the NC-12 Task Force to study the hotspots on 12. The subcommittees met for over a year. They've finalized their findings, and they will be presenting that to the NC-12 Task Force, hopefully in the next few weeks, as soon as I can establish a meeting for the task force. So we got to take that into consideration. There's multiple, multiple things that we need to take into consideration in order to move forward. And once again, in fairness to those residents in Rodanthie, everybody's name-calling this park service, and name-calling this, and you're not doing this, and you're doing that, and you're blocking this, and you're blocking that, and, you know, there's information that the park service has put out there, as well as the state and septic issues, and what we have to do as a county, that, once again, in all due respect to you folks in Rodanthie, you don't know all of that. And it's only fair for us to come, I'm willing to hold a town hall and let you be aware of what we're faced with and what we have to deal with in order to make something like this happen. You heard the county manager a while ago. What did it take them? Seven years to get permits? This was initially over 10 years ago. We fortunately fast-forwarded that process for some of our northern beaches. It's not about, well, the northern beaches get this, why can't we get this? It isn't about that, folks. That's not how it works. It's about what we can and cannot do legally in order to do a nourishment project in unincorporated Dare. So please understand that, and I'll hold that meeting sooner rather than later if the board would allow me to do that. I think it's only the right thing to do so that we can educate our residents and so that we can get on the same page and not name-call. Let's work together. Thank you for coming all the way from Ohio, ma'am. I'm sorry that, I hate that you folks are having to go through this, but we got to go through this and follow the process, and that's where we are with it.
Chairman, there were two points that I meant to bring up at your permission. I'll do them quickly.
Yes, sir.
Came out of some of the public comment. Came out of some of the public comment. One was title to the land down there and somebody, and trying to take private property. The issue is not that the park service or anyone's trying to take anyone's private property. Mr. Corlackin was right. There was monumentation that was put down when the park was built and everything to the east of that monumentation was owned by the park service and to the west of that monumentation was to, uh, the private property owner. Over time, we've had erosion and the erosion has now eroded past the monumentation. The issue isn't over the dry beach and who owns that. There's no question that the private property owner owns that. And there's no question that the park service doesn't want that or doesn't own that and doesn't claim that. The issue about title is, is the dry sand beach. I mean, the wet sand beach. So the wet sand beach is, there's only two entities that can own the wet sand beach down there. One would be the state of North Carolina. Throughout North Carolina, the state of North Carolina owns the wet sand beach. And that's the area from essentially the high tide mark out into the ocean, three miles is owned by the state of North Carolina. And as erosion occurs and that wet sand beach moves further west, the state continues to own the wet sand beach. The private property owner can never own the wet sand beach, even if his whole lot is eroded. In Kill Devil Hills, we have a whole row of lots that no longer exist because of erosion. And so there's the second row of lots in Kill Devil Hills, uh, from the old subdivisions. Now have a wet sand beach that's owned by the state and the private property owner. So, so the, the issue is the state owns it unless they've given it away. And there's a deed when they did the part that is, I'll use the word ambiguous at best, about whether the state intended to give the wet sand beach to the park or not. The Solicitor General's Office for the United States says that was the intention and that deed conveys that wet sand beach. And so from the park service perspective, they own the wet sand beach. The state hasn't contested it. We haven't contested it because it kind of doesn't matter. But, you know, as that wet sand beach moves westward, then homes find themselves in the wet sand beach, which is either owned by the state or owned by the state of North Carolina because a private property owner under North Carolina cannot own the wet sand beach. And so there's no intention of anybody trying to take or encroach or steal or whatever you wanna call it, anybody's private property. It's just a discussion about who owns the wet sand beach. And why that's important is, as we found in that exit, who's then got the authority to deal with the problems that occur in the wet sand beach, both before a house falls and then after a house falls. And so that responsibility, because the park service has that wet sand beach, they believe by that deed, has fallen upon the park service to take those responsibilities in the wet sand beach. The second issue that came up that got a lot of discussion was with Kama and the septic tanks. And that there was an effort by Kama and the state and everybody to get rid of all these oceanfront properties. I sit on the Coastal Resources Advisory Council and met and have been involved, and we had a meeting a month ago where those rules came up. And really those rules in my discussions with the director and with some of the staff aren't to force anything. They're, they're to make sure we don't have septic tanks sitting in the beach, which is the public trust. And, and the rules that they proposed were, had much broader implications than what they should have and what I believe they intended. And we told them that. We, we didn't want them creating a bunch of ghost houses sitting up on a dune that couldn't get a septic permit because of, of these rules. And so now we've got 10 houses that are in the beach. If you adopt this rule, we're gonna have 50 orphan houses up there that are sitting there empty. And we're gonna have all the problems that are associated with those. And so we've got to narrow the focus of what those rules are gonna do to take care of the problem that they're trying to address. And they acknowledge that and they're working on that as we speak. They meet again in February. If they, I don't know what they're gonna come up with, but after that rulemaking process, they, they can't adopt the rules. There's a process they have to go through, which includes public hearings. And so if whatever comes out of the CRC still isn't narrow enough, there's ample opportunity for people to come forward, voice their concerns, try to narrow the focus to, to accomplish the goals. And, and all have said that's what they wanna do. So just wanna be sure everybody understands what's going on.
Thank you for those details, Bobby. And, uh, and I will push the first of the year and, and get a, um, a date that works for everybody that we can simply, uh, hold a town hall down there in Rodanthe and, and try to answer their questions. Mr. Ross?
Are those facts that you just related to us, are they in dispute by any of the property owners? Have you received notice of counsel that we dispute the interpretation of wet sand, dry sand, National Park Service? Disposition of the NCOR funds to build beaches as opposed to the buyout? I mean, it seemed very clear what you were saying and I'm, I'm finding a disconnect.
Reasonable people can disagree about whether the deed conveyed the wet sand beach to the park or not.
It's accretion too.
Well.
Not there, not there, but.
So you open up a whole nother can of worms, right? Natural accretion goes to the property owner. Manmade accretion, beach nourishment is not owned by the property owner. So, uh, nonetheless, the, there is some discrepancy. No one has challenged it, if that's what you mean.
That's what I was having.
Yeah, no, no one has challenged it. It's not been an issue for litigation because it hasn't mattered. Because a, a property owner has no reason particularly to challenge it because if they win, they don't get it. It just means the state owns it. And if the state believes the park service own it, they can just turn around and do a deed to the park service and cure the litigation just like that. So it's kind of a crazy thing to fight about.
I see. Okay.
So, yeah.
All right, well, sorry, Mr. Chairman. If, if, uh, if it's the will of the board to engage the community there in Rodanthe, with respect to Dan and Virginia and, and the couple from Chesapeake, if we could have a, uh, interactive or, uh, video presence there. I mean, if, to drive from Cincinnati and places like that.
Oh, yeah, we'd, we'd make, we'd make that. I, I believe tech, I believe our IT folks can make that. Absolutely. Commissioner. Uh, and we'll, let's look at a date early January if we can try to take care of that. All right, Bobby, that moves us into item 12. And before I ask Barton to get into that, the reason this item is on the agenda is I mentioned it last, uh, meeting. I attended a, um, uh, Outer Banks Visas Vera Summit, annual summit. And, uh, we're 96% of those who visit the Outer Banks are, are here via, uh, vehicle transportation. And, uh, I wanted to be proactive. I saw where one of our towns was, uh, successful in getting some grants to do some, um, uh, electric vehicle charging stations to be proactive. I wanted this on our agenda to see if it's something we would entertain doing since we're moving in that direction nationally. And they're projecting that 2030, 2035, um, we, we will need this. So, uh, I just wanted us to be proactive if it's something we could, uh, attempt to, to, to go after through grant funding. And that's why Barton has this, uh, before you today.
Barton?
Yeah, thank you for introducing that. Um, so yeah, the county referenced Southern Shores. They had received a grant. It's essentially 5,000 per port, 5,000 per parking space is a rebate that's offered by the state via the Volkswagen settlement. Uh, individual county or school board, a separate entity can apply for up to $25,000. So essentially look at it as five spots. And so I'm here, obviously, to see if you all would like to move forward. Southern Shores was able to do two spots for $11,000. So it was 1,000 out of their pocket after rebate costs. As you all know, I talked to the company that did Southern Shores. They've gone up 10% since that date. And also depending on your distance from your electrical panel, that can change, uh, the cost also. So we would have to be looking when we decide on, if we decide on some, uh, buildings, we'd try to be finding the one that's closest to the electrical panel to reduce costs. So if you're probably looking at somewhere around 2,000 per parking space. I also was asked about DC, you know, fast charging, because this is only for AC charging, which would charge a vehicle about 20 miles after an hour.
20 miles after an hour?
Yes.
It's a good, good charge. Takes at least two hours.
Yeah, so.
Forty miles in two hours.
They say like a full charge is about four hours. Depends on the, the vehicle. I, I talked to the company about this for a little while. DC was brought up because it is one of those where you're charging it 20 and 30 minutes. Those stations by themselves cost $60,000. And that's not including all the electrical work to get that right. So they were saying it almost be $100,000 per kind of like, I guess, the Tesla charging station.
How many DC charging stations are in Dare County? Do we know that?
I'm assuming just the Tesla is what I would assume.
Yeah, Tesla, Tesla had, Harris Teeter.
Yeah, Harris Teeter.
That's the one I knew about. I didn't know if it's DC or AC.
Yeah, well, there's private, there's private facilities too. I know of two right off the top of my head, Adders.
And I know a lot of homes have been putting in little charging stations, like AC ones, you know, for renters and so forth to charge while they're here on vacation. But again, I think most of those are probably AC. But if you're charging overnight, um, or if someone comes to a government building and they're halfway charged or three quarter charged, this is really just topping them off, um, to make sure they can get back home or, or so forth. So I did wanna let you all know, this is one of those, this, there are no grants as far as I'm aware for DC charging, and they are about 12 times the cost, uh, than AC. So, um, I think that kind of gives you the background. I guess if you all do wanna move forward, this is kind of prioritizing which buildings, you know. I listed the admin building, the Dare County Youth Center and, uh, Kill Devil Hills, the Festin Center, the Francisco Satellite Office.
Those locations are from discussions that we had, where, if we wanted to put them, where could we put them? And so we just put a list. Here's, here's where they could go. Where they do go will be something y'all decide later if we get the grant and we choose to move forward with it.
Yeah, the grant is specific to government property, correct?
Yes.
Uh, I, I don't know if we know the answer to this, but if we go with the, uh, DC stations and we wanted to do a conversion, if the technology got cheaper or advanced enough, are these things easily convertible? With all the infrastructure being there, the sign off from Dominion, the sign off from Cape Adders Electric Co., uh, Cooperative to convert these to fast charging stations, do?
Nothing's ever that easy, Danny.
I'm not an electrician.
I'm an electrical engineer.
Yeah.
Sounds good enough.
Yeah.
You slept with it.
Slipping holiday in. No, I was just curious. I think it's a legitimate question. I, I support it. I, I think that's, uh, it's not a heck of a lot of money. It's a visitor, uh, uh, it's, uh, something else we're doing for our visitors. And there are a surprising number. There's a little bit of growth in our residents. You know, I see a lot of Teslas with OBX. I, I see a number of electric vehicles with OBX plates on my travels.
My question is, if we're putting these things in, who pays for electricity? Does county pay for electricity?
So you can set up a fee to cover. You'd have to try to figure out what that cost is for your electricity, but you can actually set up fees to cover that cost. And so.
So it's just like a regular fuel pump. You just put your car in, pay for gas, you pay for electricity.
People use it, like, people use it have like a ChargePoint app and they actually pay it via their app and it goes to Dare County. Their software, that's included in the initial cost, the initial like $12,000 that would cost for two spots.
Think hard for two hours, they can get to Columbia.
My, my other thing, you know, my, my other question about that is, um, because we do have private companies out there now that are putting up charging stations like the ones in Harris Teeter. Are we now, as a government entity, competing with private business?
Our, our thing was you take the courthouse. We have people that come in for a traffic ticket from wherever and start at 9:30 in the morning and they may not leave until 5:00. And so for them, an opportu- if they were driving an electric car, an opportunity to charge their car while they're taking care of their speeding ticket is an opportunity. And, and, and the number that we have isn't gonna be competitive with what they would do. And I mean, if we have three charging stations or four or whatever, that isn't gonna be something that could be, I would say, competitive with what they would do in the private sector. And if it becomes so widespread that it is, we take them out.
Yeah, I guess that I should state that, that this is the grant is for, you have to have it in for a minimum of five years. And these installations are good for five years. And then you have to essentially kind of rebuy in. So if you, if after five years we are competing against the market or no one's using it, it pull it out for, for free, essentially. So that is one of those things that like five years down the road, we would have to come back and say, is this working? It's, we would pay back in essentially ChargePoint is the company I call it, but it could be another company. Yes, there's a software. So you could track uses, track who's parked there and is actually finished charging, but it's still parked there. You can actually charge a fee for using up a space while you're fully charged. And there's a software that is, tracks everything and has all the financials.
Barton, do we know like, uh, stopped at, I think it was a Sheetz Station off I-95, uh, earlier in the year. And there was a, a row of these things. And folks would, like I say, put in their, their credit card and charge whatever vehicle they were charging. But, uh, do we have any idea what a normal charge cost per minute, per hour, for whatever it is?
I know off the top of my head.
I, I'm not sure, Vice Chairman, if Southern Shores has been in it long enough to determine that, but we could get certainly some info from them.
And, and that fee can change. If we say we are not, we're, the electricity we're using is way beyond what we thought it was gonna be. We can change our fees anytime to reflect.
Dave, I mean, if we know, if we know, we can take our electric bill and he can calculate what a kilowatt hour costs us. And we can then know that to charge your car costs X per dollars per kilowatt hour, then he can convert it to create a fee. That wouldn't be difficult.
Gotcha.
And then how much it's gonna cost to redo it after five years?
And we can put in whatever we can find we want to make, to maintain it and do the other things we have to do. So, but yeah.
These electric vehicles save a lot of money now.
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion. We authorize the message.
All right, thank you, Vice, Commissioner Count. Is there a second?
I'm sorry.
Second, back Commissioner House. Any further discussion?
It's a grumswell, Mr. Chairman. It's a grumswell.
Do, I know. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Barton. Appreciate all your work.
Yeah, appreciate it. We'll have continued conversations with a, essentially a, a site developer, try to figure out what those costs would be, you know, for each facility. So appreciate it, y'all.
Thank you.
Chairman, uh, item 13 is with regard to the Kitty Hawk EMS station. Just to bring us around full circle, we've been talking about the EMS station in Kitty Hawk for a long time. And we had a plan originally where they were gonna build a, a fire station and an EMS station that were gonna be together in one building. And we were gonna basically rent the EMS portion, uh, out from them and have a joint project, much as we're doing in Kill Devil Hills. They, the cost for their part of it became more than what they were prepared to spend on it. They had an opportunity to purchase the, the old Sintara building. That allowed them to do some other things. Uh, and so they chose not to move forward with the fire station portion of the EMS project. The land was owned by them. And so it didn't leave us the opportunity to just go do our own. And so we've had some discussions with them that have not been approved by their board. So I don't want anybody to, I don't wanna get ahead of the horse here, but we've had some discussions with them. And preliminarily, they're amenable to giving us two lots to build an EMS station. They think it's important for the people of Kitty Hawk that we have an EMS station up there. And so they're prepared to, they believe, and, and again, they haven't voted on it or anything yet. So I don't have this not done. Nonetheless, to do that. And so what this is, is, uh, you've got Dave's budget in front of you. You can see that our cost estimates are about 5.6 million. We had about 6.5 million in the capital plan, uh, to pay for it. So we're within what we planned for our costs. I will tell you that part of the deal with Kitty Hawk and what's being discussed is they would like a fire bay to move a fire. Their fire station is down on Kitty Hawk Road and it is, when it floods, they can't get the fire truck out. And so when a hurricane or a storm comes, they want the ability to move a truck out on the bypass, put a couple of crew members there so that they can respond for the hours until the floodwaters recede and they can get their truck out. And that's sort of the purchase price for us buying the land. If we'll give them a bay, they'll give us the land. And so that's, that's included in this cost. And so that's what we, uh, propose to do. I'll tell you that this cost is gonna change a little bit for two things. One is, last week we had some discussions. They want us. last week, we had some discussions. They want us to, to sort of add some temporary walls in the back of their bay so they can house three or four people and have a bathroom there. So when they do use it, it's usable. And so we're looking at doing that. We think that's not going to be too expensive. The idea would be that down the road, if they chose to build a full fire station there, they could join it and they could take those walls out and have a drive-through, but so they would, wouldn't be permanent load bearing walls or anything to do that. And so we're getting that cost out too, but again, we don't think that has anything to do with the project. And then we're, you know, we've got some play in this number just for rising costs that we don't know. Some things are going up and some things are going down and we don't know.
Just hang on, they're coming down.
The equilibrium is going to be.
They will. Soon as you get ten percent mortgages, Bobby, I promise you seven, this is seven hundred and fifty dollars a square foot for this. Okay? Seven hundred and fifty a square foot. Yeah, don't come down.
Okay, so anyway, so this, what I'm ask, what we're asking you for is, one, uh Kitty Hawk meets tonight. They can't vote on it. They have to do some public notice things. But I wanted to be able to go to their board tonight as they began their discussions of this and tell them that yes, we're on board, we're, we're on board with the plan that has been proposed to get this land and ask them to move forward with whatever they've got to do to start making that happen. So that's what's before you today.
Mr. Chairman, move to uh direct the county manager to proceed contingent upon town of Kitty Hawk approval.
All right, there's a motion on the floor by the vice chairman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner House. Any further discussion?
Uh, Bobby, does this include like putting the fire trucks and stuff in there temporarily, even, even on temporary basis? Uh, does this uh site work and all that uh have in there the diesel discharge? Um, exhaust ports for the truck?
Um, I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head. I can, it would be designed for whatever is required. But the thing is that truck will be in there three days every three years.
Yeah, but still, it would still be required three days every three.
Well, every time we have a hurricane, they'll move a truck out or a threat of a hurricane. And then as soon as the threat goes or the hurricane's over and they can move it back into their regular fire station. So they just, they're looking to be able to respond where, in situations where they couldn't respond from where they are.
Nice little expense, but.
But yeah, but.
Big expense.
Six hundred and seven, or seven hundred and fifty a square foot, guys. Come on, it's bargain.
Yeah. It's concrete and sheet.
But we cost them. We cost it out the cost of the day versus having to buy two lots somewhere.
Well, no, I, I understand that. I'm just saying, you, you, cause you were talking about these numbers are not set in concrete. And I understand that. That's just another part that's not in here. And that's a pretty expensive part.
Uh, if that is something that is required in the design and all that, then it is in there. This is not.
I would certainly think that's part of the design. And for some reason, I thought I saw something preliminary.
Estimate on Southern Shores.
Yeah, we, we, we're doing the same thing in Southern Shores. And so we just used the Southern Shores numbers that we've got for that, which includes what you just described.
Yeah, like I said, I've, I've built several of these. And I'm trying to find out if these.
We aren't at the building stage yet. We're at the, we're at the move forward stage.
I understand that, but y'all still need to know what is involved before you come up with numbers.
Well, we'll come, if it comes back and it's not within the budget that you all have set, we'll come back and say it's not within the budget and we can shoot it down.
Yeah.
This isn't the.
Seven hundred and fifty a foot, Steve. They ought to be lining this thing with, well.
All right, any, any further comments? Then we have a motion and a second to approve. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose likes that? Motion carries unanimous.
Uh, next is the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, you have the approval to minutes, the tax collectors report and a capital outlay budget amendment for the sanitation fund.
Move to approve, please.
There's a motion on the floor by uh Commissioner Couch to approve the uh consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose likes that?
Have any?
Motion carries unanimous.
That brings us to the board appointments and.
First is tourism.
There we go. Thank you. All right. First of your board appointments is the tourism board. The terms of Bambos Cholombos expires in December. The chamber recommends an order of preference. Richard Hess, Tim Sisler and Meyer Landbone.
Pleasure of the board.
I move, Mr. Chairman, to uh for Richard Hess, please.
Okay, there's a motion uh to approve Richard Hess on behalf of the Outer Banks Chambers. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Toby. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose likes that? Motion carries unanimous.
Next is your juvenile crime prevention council. The council recommends uh Maddox A. Crawford to fill their student vacancy. And then Heather Chavez has resigned her position. The council recommends Stephanie Baker be approved to complete her term.
Move to point all.
All right, motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve point all. Second?
Second.
Uh, vice chairman of, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose likes that? Motion carries unanimous.
And then the planning board, the terms of David Overton, Beth Midget and John DeBois expire in February and they're all recommended for reappointment.
Move to reappoint.
Kids, a motion on the floor by Commissioner Couch to reappoint. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose likes that? Motion carries unanimous.
Then your upcoming boards and committees in January, you have the working waterman commission. You have four terms expiring. And in February, you have the aging advisory council with two terms expiring. And the senior Tarfield Legislature delegates with two terms expiring. And then you have no terms expiring in March.
Okay. Thank you, county manager.
And that would be your agenda.
I appreciate that. That brings us to item sixteen, commissioner's business. And um Commissioner Couch, do you mind kicking that off today?
Absolutely, and thank you. I'm very excited to do so. Uh, good guys versus cancer, the basketball tournament uh at first flight. I took a group of about thirty kids out of Cape Hatteras up for that. And guys, it was phenomenal. If you're a hoops junkie like I am, uh, I mean, these were the top programs in the state. You've got kids on that floor that were going to the southeastern conference, the Atlantic Coast Conference, or going to American Athletic Conference. It was big time basketball. And uh, I'm so, I'm, I'm proud of the first flight school setup there. There was one hundred percent buy-in. Uh, you had your occupational uh, uh, club there with the school. You had a cancer group there. I mean, everybody gave one hundred percent effort. And uh, I spoke with uh several of the coaches. It was a very social event. Uh, I mean, these guys are like word of God out of Raleigh. Uh, uh, Saint Mary's uh out of uh Belfort, out of Charlottesville. Uh, Kinston, which is a public school. It's not a prep school, but they, they turned out Jerry Stackhouse. They turned out Reggie Bullock. They turned out, uh, I mean, and that's just Chapel Hill who they've uh sent players to. Uh, it was just a phenomenal thing to see. And, and talking with uh Chad, uh Chad Williams, the coach and athletic director there. Uh, he was so genuinely grateful. And his message uh from him to Dare County was thank you, all caps. He was very humble. Uh, it was an amazing thing. They, they were packed every night. And first flight on the final night, they, that's the first out of four years now that they've won the finale. And our guy, and they beat Kinston pretty handily. Uh, the two Dobie brothers, uh Isaac, he's a senior, Austin is a, uh, sophomore. They're going to be, they're going to be playing somewhere. And uh, we made a great representation. Uh, Manio High School, uh, the same thing. They've got a guy on there, uh, the center there, uh, Caleb Spencer, he's a, he's a division, he's a legitimate D one prospect here. Anyway, I could go on, but it was just, it was an amazing, amazing thing to see. And here's the thing, one last point on this. Events like that unify the entire county from Caffey's Inlet all the way down to Hatters Inlet. There was no turf issues there. We were all first flight. Mania was all first flight. Hatters was all first flight. You know, these kids, our school kids, they know each other. And because they're playing basketball at all time, no, there's no order of preference. I mean, I've got a sixteen year old, uh, just got his driver's license. He's six foot seven. He wants to come up here and shoot ball on the weekends and they embrace him. And there's other kids down there. I mean, if uh, and out of Hatters as well, there, you can't have five very solid prospects because this is one of the smallest public high schools in the state down there. That's just the facts. But it unified this county and uh I wish them well. And uh, uh, keep an eye on uh twenty twenty-three because these schools, they all want to come back. The Hilton put in some rooms. Uh, uh, Ramada put in some rooms. I mean, a lot of these kids, they've never even seen the ocean, you know? And uh, to come out here and be, and be treated like uh, uh, we've known them their whole lives. And then you've got the young kids, the, the elementary school kids standing there slapping fives with, you know, a six foot ten prospect going to Vanderbilt. Everybody, they loved it. It was a really amazing thing to see. I was blown away. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Toby?
Yeah, I've only got a couple of things. Um, I was recently appointed to the Children and Youth Partnership. And I went to my first orientation meeting and then I went through my training. And then I went to my first real meeting as a, as a board member. And I've got to say, they speak very highly of Dare County and our support that they, that we give them. Um, it was fantastic to see the GarageBand charity giving them ten grand a day.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it's awesome. This is a really good program. They also run the diaper program. And there's always a shortage of diapers in that program. When they, when they have the, the, there's a certain timeframe that they give the diapers out. And the shelves are empty after that happens. So if you want to do something nice for Christmas, you might want to get some diapers for the Children and Youth Partnership. Uh, the other thing, um, it's kind of neat. Um, Miss Katie was selected as one of the top ten ships built in the US.
So that's amazing.
And at the work boat show this year, um, they awarded the Miss Katie third place out of, out of all the ships that were built in America uh for the most significant boat design. So that's pretty amazing.
It is.
And.
All savings too. The efficiency there was through the roof.
Yeah. So, um, Conrad was represented there, uh, E J E was represented there. And uh, I believe uh, one of the design companies was Con, uh, um, I slipped my mind. Anyway, one of the designers was there.
Crowley.
Yeah, Crowley, I believe was there. But uh, really proud of that. And uh, we came in third. The boats that beat us was an icebreaker and a fireboat for New York City.
Wow.
We're in good company.
Pretty cool, huh?
Yeah, that's pretty cool.
Anyway, that's all I got.
Thank you, Jim. Jim, are you able to get back in the assisted livings? Yeah.
If I can make a training.
Uh, okay. Is that still up in the air?
Yeah, they, I, I, every single training that that they've had, I had eye surgery on one day. I had a follow-up appointment for the first eye surgery.
But they'll let you in after that.
Yeah, I, I was just curious. I was just curious that, you know, Spring Harbor has been sold, of course. And I didn't know if you had any feedback from the new.
I can tell you this, there's not a whole lot of people applying for the positions. You know, everybody quit except me.
Right, yeah.
Wow. So, and that's not just Dare County. That's our area wide. Has a lot of vacancies.
Well.
So if anybody's interested.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate it. Uh, Commissioner Ross?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll go through my list quickly. Just to reiterate, December seventeenth, what's happening at the Wright Brothers' first flight?
It's gonna rain.
It's gonna rain. It's gonna rain. Oh, no.
Forty knots out of the northeast.
Celebration of first flight. Just, just uh to be redundant, it's a heck of a nice celebration. I always try to get there and it's exciting. Uh, tomorrow night, we're having a fiftieth anniversary recognition of the Albemarle Commission that I sit on. It'll be in Elizabeth City. And I'm looking forward to joining my fellow commissioners on that board and, and celebrating that.
Fifty years.
Fifty years, yeah, yeah. Uh, again, Mr. Chairman, you called out recovery court and the banquet that we attended. Erv's not here, but you know, tremendous kudos, high pressure, or praise rather, to Erv for his commitment to that group. His sponsoring, holding in the banquet and the graduates that night. I thought it was a very special evening and, and really appreciated his invitation to attend. Uh, number two, or number four, rather, on Wednesday, Dorothy will be joining me. I will be meeting with and providing an interview. Mary Helen, this is your competition. His name is Aiden Pilot, a freshman at First Flight High School, to discuss essential housing in Dare County. So Dorothy and I will be doing that and meeting at the high school with this young man. Just a few uh notes on education statistics. Everybody should have this at their seat. It is from the My Future North Carolina quote unquote, which is a nonprofit, sort of a public, private collaboration of the education statistic and results, statistics and results coming out of post-COVID in North Carolina. I'll just be brief. Reading proficiency, the goal for our public schools is seventy-three percent proficiency. The state result was twenty-nine.
What?
Dare County was thirty-four. Wait, it gets better, Mr. Chairman. Math proficiency, the state goal is eighty-seven percent achievement. The state result was thirty-two. Dare, Dare County was thirty-five. Chronic absenteeism, once again, the state's goal is eleven percent or less chronic absenteeism. The result for the state, twenty-seven percent.
One out of four.
Dare County, twenty, one out of five. So you've got one out of five chronically absent. Thirty-five percent in our county can handle and proficiently demonstrate math skills and thirty-four percent reading skills.
I need a copy of that. I didn't get a.
Oh, I'm sorry. You didn't get it? As you know, I, I tend to follow this stuff. I uh track with the uh roadmap of need, which I have had several conversations with some of the people in Raleigh from the uh public school forum that published that document. And I have been urging them to renew since they have canceled publication. And uh, I know that Superintendent Steve Bassnight spoke to my contact there, Dr. Lauren Fox, and encouraged her as well as I have in conversations with her. So uh, we'll see. I'm hoping that they will renew the publication because the results are staggering. So when you hear about, well, the shutdown of the schools, well, it had to be done and it didn't have impacts beyond inconvenience. Folks, I'm telling you, it is a public emergency crisis in our schools with these kids and the data shows it. Last thing, on a happier note, happy holidays and Merry Christmas, everybody. Let's remember the season. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross. Commissioner House?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Governor Roy Cooper put out a uh a proclamation uh making uh December twenty twenty-two Marine Fisheries Management and Conservation Month in North Carolina. And uh, what kind of prompted us, you would think, why in December? Well, December thirtieth, eighteen twenty-two, the North Carolina General Assembly passed a law titled An Act to Prevent the Destruction of Oysters and for Other Purposes in the State That Restricted Oyster Harvest Year and Prohibited the Export of North Carolina Oysters to Other States. That was the first law to ever govern our marine fisheries and which was the, the beginning of the state marine fisheries management. Um, so he went ahead and did a proclamation uh for uh December twenty twenty-two uh to be a Marine Fisheries Management Conservation Month. And also in his proclamation, he does say, whereas roughly two thousand commercial fishermen ply their trades in North Carolina coastal waters, selling to nearly seven hundred fish deal, dealers to supply fish markets, seafood restaurants, grocers with blue crab shrimp, flounder and oysters and other delicacies. And the very next one, whereas an estimated one point five million recreational anglers cast their lines in North Carolina coastal waters each year, supporting, supporting a four higher fleet of more than one thousand vessels. Nineteen uh uh ocean fishing piers and countless bait and tackle shops. Um, so. Um, so actually, you know, with, with the proclamation is very good, uh, 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 commending for, uh, putting that out. Um, and also, uh, actually explaining that there are two thousand commercial fishermen and one point five billion recreational. So you can see where, if we get overfished, who is more apt to be doing that? If you've got two thousand on one boat and one point five billion on another boat. Also with, um, having marine fisheries, um, as you know, with, uh, when Bob Steinberg came off as being a North Carolina senator that left an open, uh, seat on the Atlantic Fisheries Management Council. And, uh, the Marine Fisheries Commission has, has, uh, submitted four names to the governor to appoint. Uh, one is, uh, Mike Blanton, uh, which is a commercial fisherman from Elizabeth City. Uh, another one is Jess Hawkins, a retired fisheries manager, education or ecotour operator in Morehead City. Also Thomas Newman, a commercial fisherman from Williamson. And Robert Wool, a commission, commercial fisherman from Wanchee's. Um, so the, the governor will appoint possibly one of those four to the, uh, Atlantic Fisheries Management Commission. Um, so we'll keep an eye on that, um, to make sure we get good representation on that as well.
Steve, is there a preference?
Uh, no, these are all four equally preferences by the, uh, Marine Fisheries Commission. There's no preference in which one, uh, that. Of course, they can't preference anyone. They just have to submit four names. Um, then that's up to the governor and his people to vet and appoint who they want. Uh, for our day in history, I was looking over our agenda and, uh, see if I could find something that would tie in. And, uh, we just, uh, approved the grant application for North Carolina DEQ for electric vehicle charging stations. Our day in history on this day in eighteen ninety-three, the first electric car built by the Dixon Carriage, Carriage Works in Toronto. And you'll love this. It could go fifteen miles between charges.
We've come a long way.
So, yeah, we've gone a great long way since then.
Would you say thirty miles?
Fifteen miles. Yeah, exactly. And, uh, also on a side note to electrical vehicles, uh, the United States Post Office at one time had an electric vehicle, uh, with the old, uh, the old postal jeeps and it had, had a range of thirty miles.
Not a lot to push.
That's, that's not a lot to push. And that was in the, that was in the, uh, early seventies. So, yeah, we've come a long way in the last few years. So I just thought that was, that was an interesting tidbit, uh, based on what, what we had going on in our agenda. And again, uh, I want to wish everybody, uh, here in Dare County, a, a very joyous and wonderful Merry Christmas, very safe uh, holidays, not only for Christmas, but also during and in New Years. And also to my fellow commissioners, I could not be thankful enough to serve on a board with you fine gentlemen. The camaraderie we have, uh, the open to ideas that each of us has with each other. The ability to be able to talk with amongst ourselves and all of us in those conversations that I've had with each and every one of you. One thing is very prevalent is that what is the best for Dare County? And I cannot thank this board enough, uh, for being a part of it. And, uh, I can't thank the, uh, the citizens of Dare County, uh, enough for your support and all of us up here. And, um, like I said, Merry Christmas and have a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Appreciate those comments. Vice Chairman?
Thanks, Chairman. Um, we got back on track this month with our service pens. I'd like to thank Karen Willie and our own Mr. Outen for their fifty years of service to Dare County. As always, can't do it without you. Uh, and our employees of the month, Ray Graves and Kelly Aiken, uh, those, those were some really fine choices as witnessed by the, uh, testimonial that was given on their behalf. Um, Recovery Court graduation has been mentioned that, that, that we had at Sugar Creek. And, uh, as, as, um, Chairman mentioned, uh, just, just some great, great folks coming through that program with just superb outcomes. I think Rob mentioned what a, what a fine group of folks it was. And you just had to be there to really fully appreciate how they feel about themselves. Uh, and, and that was, that was really, really came through in that, in that meeting. On November eleventh, uh, attended the Veterans Ceremony in Manio and was honored to participate uh, in that, in that ceremony, um, for our veterans. And, and again, on November sixteenth, the Veterans Lunch that was held at the Tillot Center, was, was fantastic. We have a, I think coming to Dare County called the Wall that Heals. Uh, it'll be here in November of next year. It's an exact three-quarter sized replica of the Vietnam Veterans Wall in Washington, D.C. And there will be more to come on this, uh, later as we move through the year. Finally, I'd like to say thank you to the board for allowing me to be vice chair for the, for the coming year. Really appreciate your confidence in that. And to everyone, happy holidays, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. That brings us to, uh, county manager's business and I'll ask the county manager for his and then I'll call on Dorothy and David as I always do. And then we'll go into a closed session if, if that's okay with the board.
Yes, sir. I'm, I'm sorry, but I have several things. We had a whole influx of stuff that came in at the end of last week. First, I, again, want to thank you all for your kind words earlier, Mr. Chairman. Dare County's like the, the big freight train. The train keeps going. You all decide where it wants to go. My job's keep it on the track. And then Dave and Dorothy and our department is in our staff do all the hard stuff to keep it running and make it go. So we've got a really good team. And as I said earlier, you all make that possible and I, I much appreciate it. Um, a couple of things or updates. One is, uh, over at the Kitty Hawk Baseball Fields, we've been looking at that for a while. The chairman's been out there a couple of times to walk the grounds with us and, and so on. And there are a number of things that need to be done with regard to the press boxes, the bathrooms. Uh, there's some erosion issues in the field. There's some fence issues. There's quite a list. But there's about sixty-five thousand dollars worth of things that need to be done, uh, on those two different fields.
And which are the two? I know the one I can see from.
There's another one.
That's Field One. The hand it further back is Field Two.
Okay, that, that's, thank you.
And so, uh, we've given the list over to buildings and grounds, some things they may be able to do, some things they aren't going to be able to do. Um, uh, we can move forward with it. My intention is to pay for that out of the contingency. I don't need to get your approval to do that, but I don't like to spend that kind of money without telling you what I'm doing. Uh, and make sure, you know, no one has any issues. So that's ongoing and we're hoping to get that done. Uh, Dustin's got it in the process to try to get it bid on and get it going before, um, baseball season starts this spring. We hope to have all that done. But just let you know and the public know that we're working on that.
Is that some stuff Bobby put the fields and sales or is it?
There's a, there's a whole.
It's multiple.
Oh, they have a long list.
Dugouts need to be repainted and they've got to be sandblasted because they're steel and, and, you know, I don't know. The list is, is.
The dugouts of wood, some wood repairs need to be placed, some, some crankouts on windows need to be replaced.
A floor in the concession stand.
We need to paint all those facilities. Uh, as a matter of fact, if you recall, uh, uh, I, I jumped up and said I'd, I'd take care of the dugouts at behind the, uh, uh, schools and, and Steve's agreed to work with me on that, trying to find a day to get that done. But we'll get it done in the next thirty days. But those, those issues that, that's, and Bobby's also gotten into uh, writing a memorandum of understanding between them and us so that going forward, they know what their responsibilities are.
Why don't you share it with us, Bobby?
Yes. And that's in addition to the things that we already got in the budget to do out behind the First Flight Schools. So, um, second thing is, you all may have heard, but Weeks, uh, Marine has pulled off of the Duck project and intends to come back to their project, uh, in the, in March. And the reality is they had a project in Norfolk, I believe, that they were dredging. Uh, they were, they had asked for a, a permit extension up there uh, so they could finish here and then go up there and finish. And EPA did not give them the extension. And so reading between the lines, it was economically more feasible for them to leave us than to leave them. And so they left us and they're going to Norfolk to finish. And they can't work in January, February here because the water's too rough. And so they'll come back in, in, uh, March to start that. We're, the contract is between us and them, but it's really Duck's project. We have an agreement with Duck, an MOU with Duck where we're simply the bank and the pass through and Duck handles all the other stuff. And so we've been meeting Dave and I and Dustin and officials from Duck and, and, uh, Ken Wilson and officials from, uh, Weeks. And we've had several meetings and there's a proposal there. And the, the long and the short of the proposal is Duck wants them to make them whole. So if we lose more sand between now and when they come back in March, so that the starting point is in the same place, Weeks has got to put that sand back and then start essentially from the same place and make them whole. They have damages that no one anticipated. They got. We're negotiating all that now. Um, Duck has a meeting later this week. I think we have a meeting tomorrow with them, Dave? With, with Weeks tomorrow. Hopefully we'll resolve it then. Uh, Duck meets Wednesday night and if they approve it, and what I'm looking for is we have to ultimately sign the change in the contract to meet the settlement that Duck agrees to. And I want your authority for the county, for me to sign that contract, uh, if Duck approves it. So we're going to be sort of doing Duck's bidding. It doesn't impact the fund and it doesn't impact us either way. Uh, and so, but I do have to sign the contract. So you all have to approve it. Sorry. I do.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner Taven is seconded by Commissioner, Commissioner Couch. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sent. Motion carries unanimous.
Right. Um, at some of our meetings, when Cheryl was out, you've seen Skylar Foley sit over here and handle that. And she's handled some of the other things that, for us and has done a, a great job. Um, she was our floater in the county and she's just taken a promotion. I think she's going to be the new admin in the uh, planning office. Um, but what we would like to do is formally appoint her as the deputy clerk so that in Cheryl's absence, she has the authority to fix the seal and attest signatures and do all those things that a clerk could do. We're going to send her to clerk school and learn how to do it and create some bench depth behind Cheryl so that one day, whenever that day comes, then, you know, we have something that we can roll smoothly in, but. Really, the impetus for this is not that. The, the impetus is just when she's out, she's on vacation, she's sick, whatever. We have the ability to keep moving. So.
Skylar did a great job.
Right. So I need someone to make a motion to appoint her as a deputy.
I'll make a motion. Okay, a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to appoint her as deputy is, is seconded by Vice Chairman Ove. Any further discussion?
Just, just to caveat that she's a tough act to follow.
All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sent. Motion carries unanimous.
And, and Cheryl will sw, will swear in sometime when they cross paths and so she'll be official then. So. All right, uh, next, um, we got a letter, was it, I don't know if it was Thursday or Friday, Mr. Chairman, from Harry Capone at McGuire Consulting. The legislative session is going to start in January. Wanted to note that we want to renew. So it's the same terms, the same contract, the same everything as we've done in the past. We've got the funds in the budget for that. And so I need your approval to.
So moved to approve.
Second. Okay, it's been, it's been, uh, a motion's been made by Commissioner Couch and Vice Chairman. It's been seconded by I'd say Commissioner House. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sent. Motion carries unanimous.
And then finally, um, as you all know, in our Recovery Court, some time ago, we, uh, have Emily, our Recovery Court Administrator. And we have an arrangement where we fund that position, but she's actually an employee of the administrative office of the courts. And so there's an MOU between us and them where we give them the money and then they pay her through their system and take care of all that stuff. Well, we had, I think we approved it in the budget, but we also have, um, now a desire to get a Recovery Court probation officer. And it's a part of the opioid proceeds in that thing is the funding for that. Um, I got the contract from AOC last week for that to do exactly the same thing. That probation officer will be an employee of AOC for a position that we fund. Um, the Recovery Court folks are having trouble because they don't have staff and, and our other, um, probation officers' plates are too full to actually go and do and the things they need to help these folks that are recovering, actually recover and get them where they need to be. A lot of them can't drive and, and so on. So it's a probation officer to, to do that will be directed there. Uh, and again, we'll fund that through those funds, but I need your approval to execute that contract.
Moved to approve.
Motion on the floor by the Vice Chairman to approve. So it's seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sent. Motion carries unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. I hope you all have a, a nice Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Bobby. Are we at liberty to, um, have, you have the numbers for us to move forward on this issue with our facilities being open, um, on the weekends? Are we, are we there? Have we got numbers yet to where we can at least talk about it?
The numbers I gave you, I forgot what I told you.
Yeah.
I did too, to be honest.
He said he remembered everything.
I know.
Well, he does. He's good at that. I, I just, we need to get this off our plate and quit talking about it. Or either we move it and tell them what to do.
Here, here's, our range of numbers depended on who we, whether we hire people from the outside or whether we use our current staff. And if we use our current staff, where are they in the pay scale? Because you got to pay them time and a half. Uh, our numbers run from about seventy-five thousand to a hundred and fifteen thousand, depending on who you use. I believe those were the right numbers. Does that sound right, Bobby?
Yeah, it does.
And if we're going to do this, then we would have to fund those. We could probably fund that out of contingency too for this year if we wanted to. But what you'd be doing if we did that is you'd be layering that automatically in the next year's budget or you'd be closing what we just did.
I, I'd just like to see us take a look at this six months after we do it.
Yeah, okay.
Well, is this making sense or not? Sunset clause, you know, because I don't like the permanent, let's just keep adding stuff.
Right, right. Okay. Um, so what I've told the chairman and some of the rest of you who've asked about this, if that's the direction that we want to go, then we have two choices. We can open it at whatever hours we want. What we looked at for those numbers was going from nine to five on Saturday. I think we said twelve to five on Sunday. Uh, if we didn't want to do Sunday and just did Saturday, then the numbers are a little bit less than that, whatever, about a twenty-five percent less.
Do it, do it.
Um, and we can look at demand. The other thing that we would do, not just six months from now, but if we went a month and there was no demand on Sunday, we wouldn't keep paying somebody to go over there on Sunday for nobody to show up.
Yeah, we can monitor this and if it ain't working, we, we shut it down.
And, and we're not just talking about pickleball. We're talking about making, this is across all of our centers. So we would be talking about the Tillot Center. We'd be talking about the Baum Center. We'd be talking about the Pheasant Center, Westkap Park, all of our centers we would open. And, you know, and it, we would then have to schedule demand because somebody might want to play basketball and somebody might want to play pickleball and somebody might want to do something else. And so we'll try to do the best we can to meet all those demands. Our intention isn't to, we're not opening everything up so that pickleball has exclusive use of the facilities on the weekends.
A lot of pushback on that.
Well, that's right. But, and we've had demand, uh, from our centers in our budget talks several times, several years in the past, that we've chosen for whatever reason not to do. And so now we're meeting something that they've been requesting for some time if we go forward. So if we're going to do it now, then let me know and I can figure out how to get it paid for and we'll get it done. If you want to wait till budget time, we can do that. The pleasure's yours.
Let's do it now.
Let's do it now. I'll say go ahead and do it now. Then we have budget time, we'll have a better idea.
Right, right.
Absolutely.
All right. Do you need that in the motion?
I do.
Okay.
So moved.
I need in that motion to include me to authorize any budget amendments or anything else, David, I need to do to make this happen.
So moved.
Okay. Okay. Motion by the Vice. Okay. Okay, motion by the Vice Chair. It's been seconded by Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Like aye? Motion carries you now. Thank you, Bobby, for addressing that. All right, that brings me to our public information office. Ms. Hester, did you have anything for us?
I do. Today, our redesigned website launched. So, we're very excited about that. I think Matt has a short video queued up.
Hi, I'm Kaitlyn Kite, Deer County Public Relations Specialist. I'm here today to showcase the newly redesigned Deer County website. We know that finding information on our website as quickly and seamlessly as possible is important. In the community survey, which we conducted in early 2022, your suggestions included utilizing more apparent department buttons and making improvements to the navigation. Incorporating this, our goal for the new website was to streamline resources, making the site easy to use and interactive. One of the first things you may notice is the change in our URL. Our website is now darenc.gov. Switching to a .gov will make our website more secure and trustworthy. However, darenc.com will still continue to take you to the right place. You may actually find that navigating the website the way you're accustomed to has not changed. Many features can be found in the same location. We have just added a few helpful shortcuts and we'd like to showcase a few of these new features. We're really excited about the new Service Finder feature. This tool makes paying a bill or finding a form easy. Let's find the building permit application form together. Simply scroll down to find a service, select the action you would like to perform, in this case, apply. In the next dropdown, select for a building permit. And in the window that populates, simply click the link to access the form. Another new feature is what is called the sticky search bar. As you scroll down the page, you will see that the search bar remains at the top of your screen. This way, if you're having trouble finding the information you're looking for, you can simply click the search icon at the top of the page, type the information that you're looking for, and navigate to the information you're trying to find. Looking for the most recent board meeting, you can now view the latest videos on our website. Simply scroll to the bottom of the homepage to access the latest videos. Most website visitors will be happy to know that accessing the GIS is still as easy as ever. Simply use the quick click button on the homepage. Nothing has changed in regards to navigating the GIS in a property search. As with any new product, there may be issues that we will need to work out along the way. Please report any problems that you may experience using the feedback link on any webpage that you are visiting. The future of Deer County is bright and engaging and our new county website reflects that. Visit the new site today at darenc.gov.
Okay, Dorothy.
And Kaitlyn did a lot of work. She kind of led this effort. And even David, a couple of employees have already reached out to say, wow, I really like it. It's got a very soft feel. It's a lot of the beauty shots. Check it out. Give us your feedback. But we're excited. It's been a long time coming and it's a lot of work. So,
Dorothy, just a question. On, on the, going to the darenc.gov, on, on our emails and stuff like that, do we need to change to .gov at the end of it or what do we do?
We'll be transitioning to that. So, right now, it's just the website. And as it said, the .com domain will link over. We will be moving. Matt will be leading the effort to move the emails, but we decided it was better to slowly transition to that. But you'll be hearing more about it.
Ten full.
Yes. So, I'm very excited about that. And Merry Christmas.
Dorothy, do you want to make that formal announcement of the state of the county?
Yes. We'll actually be putting the date out this week, announcing Wednesday, January 25th, for the chairman's state of the county. And it will be at Captain George's. We'll be back in person, which is really nice. And it will be a breakfast meeting. And there's going to be online registration. You all will be registered automatically. So, you don't have to do that. I'm going to assume that everyone can attend.
January?
Twenty-fifth, Wednesday. I believe we start at eight AM.
Eight AM.
So, yes, I will be registering all of you. And I'll send you an email about that. So, you can let me know if anyone has a conflict. But do go ahead and add that to your calendar and we'll be publicizing it starting this week. And we hope to have a full house.
Yeah. Thank you, Dorothy. I'm looking forward to it, being back in person. We've already had a couple of meetings to discuss the agenda. So, I'm working with the, that department to see if we can't do, uh, do it justice. I'll try to do my best to do it justice.
The, the difficult part is actually trying to trim it.
Right.
Because there's, there really is a lot that takes place.
We're going to focus on five major.
Yeah. So, we're, we're going to take it, rather than trying to put everything in there, we're going to try to just focus.
I would agree. I was just going to say, do a little deeper dive, but limit it to five and try to cover the whole landscape.
That's, that's exactly what we, we talked about.
Yeah. Thank you, Dorothy. Anything else?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Uh, Finance Director, Mr. Clausen, do you have a nice Thanksgiving? Oh, man, I put him on the spot.
Yeah, you did. We were still working. Because, uh, because we got the audit report filed by our December first deadline with the Department of State Treasurer. And we've done the GFOA certificate program. We've done the continuing disclosure on the Emmett website. You've gotten a recent ratings affirmation. I forgot to tell you about the Moody's that was November seventeenth. But they've changed their rating methodology. They don't look at the underlying like you've got a courthouse pledged as a deed to trust. Now, they're looking at the county. So, good news was we were one of six hundred and thirty-six with no change. And then, uh, last week, Fitch affirmed us also with no change.
So, we're still double A plus?
Moody's double A plus, Fitch's double A.
Fantastic. That's fantastic.
And as hard as we tried to make the audit report shorter, it went from two hundred and thirty-eight pages to two hundred and forty-seven.
Nine pages. Oh, my God. Wow. It's exciting to read though.
Just make the font smaller.
Yeah. Unbelievable. Well, thank you, David. Um, just one comment. I, you know, while I mentioned the, the veterans lunching and I know Commissioner Ross was there and, you know, I, I gotta say this. Of course, my whole family's, my dad was in Second World War and Korean War. And I'm a veteran as well, but in the United States Army and just proud to be. But my wife and I went yesterday to the movie theater to see the devotion. And I'm embarrassed to say that, and I'm a history buff, that I never knew Jesse Brown, twenty-four-year-old black American, African-American, who served in the Korean War and became the first naval aviator pilot that flew missions, twenty-some missions in support over, over the, to support our troops on the ground. Who, I don't want to say was shot down because, uh, I guess you could legally call it shot down, but any aircraft didn't shoot him down. It just so happened that one of the North Koreans got a lucky M-16 whatever shot and hit his plane, because they were low-flying planes at, at the time, and hit his oil tank. And he kept losing oil pressure and he didn't have enough to get back to the ship. So, he, he put it into, he put it into snow, uh, to the tune of about twenty degrees below zero, fifteen miles in, 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 behind the lines. And his wingman circled and flew and, and he kept saying, he couldn't see him getting out the cockpit. Come to find out, he's, he disobeyed orders and ditched his plane as well and went in to try to rescue him. And he, the reason he couldn't get out is because the fuselage of the, the engine underneath buckled and trapped him in where he couldn't get, he couldn't get out. His legs were trapped and he bled out. But incredible, emotional, tearful movie. If you have a chance, go see it. It is incredible, uh, story about a young African-American at twenty-four years of age gave his life so that you and I could have the freedoms that we have. And just a smart young man. He worked in the cotton fields and he saw the planes fly over. He said, one day I'll be able to fly one of those. But what he had to go through, uh, to get, earn his pilot wings was just unbelievable, just incredible. Like I say, worked in the cotton fields. He went to Ohio State, graduated from Ohio State. Ross, uh, if you get a chance, uh, go see the movie. Go see the movie. It's just incredible. I know this certainly doesn't have anything to do with county business, but when, when the Vice Chairman spoke about veterans, uh, what an outstanding, incredible human being he was. And, uh, and his, his, his wingman, all those years kept going back. They, they, they gave him a burial. They didn't want the enemy forces to get his, uh, to get his body. So, they bombed it with napalm. And, and, and his wingman tried to go back year after year after year to North Korea to retrieve whatever remains was there. And he was actually able to do that in 2017, after being, him being shot down in nineteen fifty in the Korean War. So, anyhow, uh, very emotional, very taken back. God bless those type of people, those people that, that afford us our freedoms every single day. County manager?
Yes, sir. We need a motion to go into a closed session pursuant to NCGS 143 through 181185 to instruct the county staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by on behalf of the county in negotiating the price of the material in terms of a contract, proposed contract for acquisition of real property. And this is with regard to the shipment property you're managing.
Okay, so moved. There's a motion by Commissioner Ross, seconded by Commissioner Couch. Those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like aye? Motion carries you now.